Hello, Missionary Baptist Church. Would you mind doing our invitation? And who's the guest you have with you?
I have my daughter, Katrina.
I bet she's a daughter.
Yes.
That's Chloe.
She's breathing.
Yeah, she's cold.
You gonna help him, Miss Chloe?
She's not helping. She's shy.
Very shy. We figured that out.
Let us bow for a moment in prayer. I have the Father, we do thank you for this moment. We thank you for allowing us to come that we might share in the activities that is needed in order to discuss the business of the city and this county. We thank you, the Father, for all those representing the people of this county. We pray, the Father, that as the proceedings go on, the Lord, you would help the individuals make decisions that would be necessary in order to help the people of this area. We thank you, your Father, for them, and we trust and pray that, Lord, you guide their thoughts and guide their minds to do your blessed will. Father, we're thankful for all of those that have come, that they may be a witness of what is going on. We pray, the Father, that you continue to give them the wisdom and knowledge in order to help this city to continue to grow. We thank you, dear Father. We pray, the Father, for this city. We pray for the counties. We pray for all the officials through, from the mayor on through the supervisors, that, Lord, all the decisions made will be of benefit to the people of the area. We continue to pray, Father, for the governor and all of those that are in the legislature that make a decision in order to run this state. And not only that, but, Lord, we continue to pray for the president and all those that make decisions for this country and all the officials around the world. We pray for peace. We pray, the Father, for the troops, wherever they are located, that they continue to defend, defend this great nation. And, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus, we ask that you will continue to bless this, this country, continue to bless our people. In Jesus' name we pray, and for his sake.
Amen. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Proud of Rocky, you want to leave his head wet?
Yeah, hand over hard. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Bye, Chloe. It was nice meeting you.
Thank you all.
Okay, is Miss Tequino Jones in the house? Do you want to come up and state your name and address for the record? You tell us about your claim.
Right there.
Right there, right.
Tequino Jones, thirty-eight hundred, thirty-eight, this area, this street, this one, this city.
Okay, so you've got a glass?
I got it.
On a glass? Can you tell us what happened?
I was coming down Canal, and the guy that was bush-hogging with the tractor, he was going south. And here as I was coming, he was, I had my window down, he was bush-hogging the side of the road, bush-hogging over rocks, there's a guard with it down, and the rocks flew up inside my car and hit my windshield as I was going, going somewhere else. And then there was one of the work trucks that was behind him, that was behind me, that saw it. And I pulled over at the gas station, he pulled up behind me at the gas station, I stopped before I did, and I told him, dude, hey, you more, you more over rocks. And then when I stopped him, he took the number down, I called his supervisor, and they came with the safety, he came, inspected and took fifty. And when I told him, I was like, well, she was like, oh, well, it's on. The safety thing though, behind there was no signs saying he was going working there at the time.
I got it. And that would be Miss Lisa Bradley?
I think so.
Miss Bradley. Were the signs out or anything?
When I arrived, the signs was out, I'm going in, nothing, nothing, no heading ahead.
Can I object that?
No, go ahead, babe.
Because when I, the safety guy that was behind me, it was no signs visible at all. And as I left, because I told him I had to drop somebody off that was with me at the time, to go run and drop him off, because he had a meter. And when I came back, unless he must have put him back after I came through, because when we came, there was no signs, no first out.
Got you.
You're saying the safety guy?
The, that's in the work truck, I guess, I guess, the bush-hog guy.
Tim, do you have anything to add to that?
I was made aware that this incident happened after it was already done. But also, I was told that the works on the signs was out as well, so I don't know the discrepancy.
The tractor driver indicated that his discharge on his mower was opposite from the car he was driving. The long arm was facing south, and he was going north, the long arm was facing south, cutting towards the wood.
So it was blowing toward the traffic?
No, it wasn't going towards traffic, it was going towards the wood.
I object, it was, because when I came back, and I told her, when she looked at it, the guard, the guard that's supposed to be up was up, and she saw, as you coming south, as you going south, and somebody coming north, as the blade cuts south, it's gonna shoot, it's gonna shoot towards south as he's traveling. If the, if the hand of the, the guard is this way, well, he more with the equipment going this way, and I'm coming this way, of course, I just gonna fly up under and hit you going as you come north. That's how they operate. And as, as I told her, most, most city equipments, they have what you call a change on them to keep debris for coming up in case there's no guard that's, that's supposed to be covered. And his guard was up, the hydraulic guard. So it made like a shadow where it go up and slide back, that was up the whole entire time. And he had numerous amount of tracking behind him, and I stopped tracking and yelled at him like, hey, you, you, you could, he could have took my eye out or anything, because you're not being aware or paying attention of what you're doing, and you moreing over rocks. Of course, when you more over rocks, even when you push more, it's gonna, it's gonna fly whatever debris that's up under, especially rocks. And rocks can come out as numerous amount of speed, if you kill somebody. So that's, that's my discretion behind it.
Mr. Hallman, I'm gonna call on our board attorney to give us some legal advice on this.
The question is whether or not the county employee was negligent in some manner. What you have is an dispute between there were signs out, that's the first issue. He says there were, the county says there were, there's photographs of the signs up. So he got warning that there were, he says he didn't get it, the county's position is he got warnings that mowers were ahead, so the whole purpose of the sign is to give people an opportunity to avoid the area, because mowers, you gotta mow the grass. No question that time to time, something will get thrown up from a mower, to give the public warning so they can avoid the areas, that's a cause of some of the risk. The other thing is whether or not the guard was up or down. Guard was up, then that was probably negligence to have the guard up, where it would throw something else. If the guard was down, then it's probably not negligence. So the question is for the board to determine factually which version is correct or not.
Yes, was it, was the guard up, do you know, or the down?
The picture she has here, the guard is down. Now, whether he was cutting, I don't see.
At that time.
Yeah, at that time. What that guard's made to do, it's also a pressure sensitive guard on it, so if it's cutting bigger trees or debris that push itself in, then after it gets off of that debris or the bigger limbs or whatever it's cutting, it's made to push itself back out. Now, whether it was or wasn't.
Is the guard automatic?
It's hydraulic and automatic. It's got a pressure sensitive deal, but you can also pull it back with the hydraulics. Now, through the picture here, it's showing that it's closed.
I object on that.
One more thing first. So you're saying the sign was not up?
The sign wasn't up.
Okay.
And I had a witness that was with me at the time, but I can't find him.
Okay, that's fine. So you're saying that the sign was not up?
The sign was not up.
Let me, let me speak. You're saying the signs were not up, and you're saying the signs was up. So how much timeframe do you think they had a chance to put them signs up?
Yes, they did, because after I left.
Wait a minute, let me ask a question. So you're thinking that, that when you saw the sign, when you passed on the street, you, you seen no signs?
No signs visible.
So by the time that you pulled over, and the, and the safety officer came, the sign was up?
But I told the guy.
Now, that's a yes or no?
No. This is the explaining part. When I, when the guy reached me on the phone and said I had to drop someone off, there was, they took, I said, well, I'll be back in about ten, twenty minutes, which had him, gave them enough sign, enough time to go back and put the signs back and make it seem like they was in the right. Because as, as, as I was traveling, it was a safety guy behind me, and he, he, it wasn't no signs on his truck to even put them out. So as I, he saw the whole incident. So when I pulled over, I was like, well, I'm, I gotta go run him somewhere, because he had to go do his job before the heat. And as I came back, all of a sudden, the sign was out and his guard was up, and need I remind him, when you, when you working with a pneumatic or hydraulic equipment, those things do tend to fail, even when you using them on the equipment. So in case it might also got stuck to where it couldn't go back up, or go back down as he was bush-hogging, like she said, or when they put it down, all of a sudden, I know you didn't mess with the scene as I left the scene to come right back, because I had to go, I had an important issue that I had to go take him somewhere at the time. So there was enough time for you to go back and put back outside in north and south, and also to temper with the equipment during the accident.
So your kids and the county employees are lying?
Things do happen.
Or will it?
Yeah, I mean, because.
Never happened in the history of my being here twenty-two years.
Well, but you'll be surprised. So much happened in this time of day, so.
Where's the friend that was in the car with you?
He's somewhere, I couldn't find him, because I tried to reach.
Have a statement from him, a written statement to confirm what you said?
I could have got one, but they just told me to come here, and I was, I was, I could have found him.
Your burden to prove the case is the problem, so.
Yeah, but I also had the, this, the guy that was in the truck that was behind me that saw it as well, which is his worker.
Did you get a name of that worker?
Well, as, I'm gonna say this, as far as me remembering, some of the things I sustained in severe accidents was causing me brain trauma, somebody put out for me on motorcycle not too long ago, every twenty-second. So, I mean, yeah, every twenty-second, that's why I'm going through all this. So as far as me remembering much, getting a name, I'm not gonna remember that, because I sustained short-term memory loss.
Madam President?
Yes.
You do have short-term memory loss. You think that maybe you did not, you know these signs?
He was with me, and I had rocks, and I told her, I didn't mean to cut you off.
You're possibly saying that maybe you didn't see the signs, maybe you weren't, didn't pay attention to them, and sometimes I don't see them.
I pay attention. Since my accident, I'm well aware of everything, more than ever, even with, even with that. So there's, there's not no issue, because if there was a sign, I would have remembered that.
Can we hear from our safety officer one more time? Could we, could you, could you tell us the story one more time on your, what you?
Yes, I received a call from Mr. McGee about ten, probably ten-thirty-one, it happened at ten-thirty. As soon as I got the call, I went outside, I went out there. That's my first thing I looked for, the signs. So one was right there about Canal Bridge, and then the other was about that hotel on Canal. That's the first thing I looked for, the signs. And then I spoke with District Four worker that was controlling the tractor, and he said that the guy had left. And so by the time I was getting his information, his statement, then he pulls up, and then he tells me about the, the rock popped in, popped the windshield, popped in the car, because he picked up a rock from his car, said, hey, you wanna take a picture of this? I said, no, I just need the windshield. Well, I took a picture of the windshield and stuff. If you see all the crack on the windshield, they already spread it and everything, so I don't know how we would be liable for windshield.
So the windshield was already cracked?
I don't, I can't say it was already cracked, it's just, it appears when it was.
You already saw it. It's firing now.
It's ran all, you know, all over.
Yes, firing now.
So what is the board's?
A motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny the claim. Then we have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion to deny carries.
I got a question. Why is my motion being denied if the city is here to laugh before? Because when the rock hit a corner due to its being hot, of course, the temperature's gonna make the rock spread even more.
Well, just like, as our board attorney just explained, we have what we call rules of the road. In other words, we're doing, we're doing a public service on the road, so.
That's fine. I don't, I hear nothing.
Thank you.
Next, let's, number two, recognize Daniel Reed with Mississippi Power to discuss LED street lighting.
Morning, how are you all today? Daniel Reed with Mississippi Power and the Lighting Department. Just wanted to come by today and have a minute to discuss what we're doing as a company with our LED street lighting. Moving forward, any older streetlights that we have out there, the old HID, the old orange, yellow-looking streetlights, they are going away. We no longer maintain those, we don't have parts for them, they're too expensive, everything is going to LED. We are moving forward in the next few weeks to start streetlight lights. So we're gonna be moving down every single street from Waveland to Pascagoula all the way to Marida, changing out every single streetlight. And the cost difference in the streetlights, what we have now versus what we're going to, is LED lights are, they're cheaper. Most of them are gonna be a dollar to two dollars cheaper than what's in the field now. But if you start getting to some of these neighborhoods where the black fiberglass or black aluminum poles are with the decorative light on top, those are gonna be, the new lights are somewhere around fifty cents, fifty-five cents more expensive than the old lights. So we're looking at everything kind of washing out, be the same at the end, because it's gonna save in areas, and be a little more expensive in other areas. Yes.
You're talking about just changing the light bulb out?
Whole fixture.
The whole fixture.
Yes.
Keep in mind that I understand that if we have subdivision with special streetlights, they pay the difference, we only pay a set amount. So the county's not gonna pick up the difference for the street, those expensive streetlights.
That's not what he just said.
Most of the time.
We say what we gonna pay for, not them.
Oh, man, I'm just saying.
The subdivision's, am I wrong?
I know they do at Traditions. Traditions is a, and that's coast electric.
Right, that's coast electric.
We pay the standard fee.
We pay standard fee.
For those signs, for those streetlights, and they have special.
They pay the difference.
They pay the difference.
Yes.
Okay, I just want that clarified. We're not gonna pay the difference for them, for those special.
For their own updates, you know. Madam President? But most of the time, we deal with coast electric. We've been, we, we had a conference with them, I think, about two or three years ago, and they promised that they would start, as they changed out fixtures, they would put in LED. So we don't, do we deal with Mississippi Power that often?
No, we still have a lot of Mississippi Power's streetlights, too.
I've just, I know, because there's, there's that rule, and then there's the, we deal with both of you.
So I know for a fact, of North Swan Road, Swan Lake subdivision, that area out that way, and then we've got some places over around Past Christian Anne, I believe, kind of northern section of Past Christian Anne, maybe even Long Beach, that there are a few out there that way. And also, one other thing I was gonna mention is, we're.
Somebody called and bugged y'all on a stormy night. I'll have to, I'll have to get your number.
Yes. We're also installing network lighting controls on every single streetlight that we have. So instead of the plain old photocell that you see on the top of the light now, it's gonna be a little bit bigger device. And the, the idea behind this device and what it's gonna do for us is it's gonna let us know automatically when that light is out. Whenever there's loss of power to it, whenever the LED chipboard on the inside is going out, so we get automated emails to us, just like our new AMI meters do. So there's, there'll be times that we know the light is out before the customer even does.
That's excellent.
So that will help us with our repairs and all of that.
Years ago, when we were involved in electrical business, we used to go around and tie flags on the ones that were out, because they stayed out for long periods of time, and nobody could report it up, so.
But I just wanted to, to let y'all know where we are and where we're moving to as a company with our lighting program. That way, if anybody in the, you know, county contacts, you can ask people what's going on with the streetlights, you'll know. So, but I would love to leave a card if y'all need it, that way you can, if you've got any questions.
Are you the new liaison between the counties and?
Not the, no, not necessarily. I'm just in the lighting department, so. But who do I need to?
Give it to our county administrator, Pam, just in case she gets some calls.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Glad to hear the updates.
Yes, ma'am. Y'all have a great day.
Thanks, Daniel.
Consent agenda. Agenda items number three through seven have been placed on the consent agenda. Same appearing to be retained on controversial matters on which all supervisors are likely to agree. Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eight, tax assessor. Order spreading on amendments, personnel changes, as tax assessor's offices listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nine, order acknowledged or receipt of and approving petitions for decreases to the 2020 real property tax rule as recommended by the tax assessor. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item ten, order approving payment in amount of nineteen thousand, two oh five forty-five for the fifty percent down payment on floor LLC invoice five seven one three, execute sales order eighteen ten four one three for material installation of flooring and the tax collectors go forward, have courthouse office previously approved on July the sixth. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eleven, order spreading on amendments, personnel changes for tax collectors offices listed on file with the payroll department. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twelve, order approving grant application in amount of seventy-five thousand dollars with the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality to fund the annual bring it, house so hazardous waste collection event at the Mississippi Power Jack Watson, and therefore in authorizing board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen, order approving request by the Harris County Beautification Commission for a five-year agreement beginning June twenty-first and ending June twenty-first, twenty-twenty-six, between Harris County Supervisors Beautification Commission and the mayor and city council of Biloxi for adopt a roadway program located at Henry Beck Los three oh seven. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
We do have paperwork on this, though, right? It's all included. Because the Dr. Weir program, we always had paperwork that.
I haven't seen it, but I'm sure it do.
Okay.
And how can we go, how can we do a five-year agreement with anybody for anything?
You can do it, but it's voidable. It was beyond the term of the board. The board can, the match term can void the choose to. Can't contract me on your term, but it's voidable in the term.
And who made this request? It's the new guy?
The new guy.
Where is he?
It's been, and it's, I started the program a hundred years ago.
I know what the program is, I want to know who made this specific request.
They started it with Diane.
For Division Street in Baby Rabbit.
It's been, it's been going.
They started it with, before Diana left, it was in the process, I think, of, maybe Helen Belcher, maybe, or one of them. I guess from the commission, they had started it and brought it back to him.
There's no cost to this.
There's no cost to it. All they do is.
That's my next question. Is there a cost?
No, there's no cost. All they do is keep that area clean.
The only thing they do is keep the area clean.
Yeah.
They just try to keep that area.
I'll take it in Gulfport County, if you don't mind.
All those, all those in favor signify by aye.
Do want it.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fourteen, order approving payment of claims as listed as recommended by Jackie Turner. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifteen, order approving payment of claims of U.S. Geological Survey for annual operation and maintenance of river stream gauges in the amount of twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixteen, order indicating travel for Pat Sullivan, fire chief, to attend the twenty-twenty-one MFI A seminar in Pearl, Mississippi. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item seventeen, order approving contract with image trend in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred sixteen dollars for expansion of image trend current software for dispatch services. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item eighteen, order approving contract with caliber in the amount of four thousand three hundred and sixty dollars for nine-eleven interface work. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item nineteen, discuss out-of-state trips for August and September twenty-twenty-one for the Senior Resources Agency. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, to discuss is what the order is.
I know, I'm just short-changed, make the motion to approve, because I've seen problems, unless somebody has a problem with.
Don't matter to me if they want to mask up and do it. Okay, so you're.
They requested it.
You got a second?
They requested it.
All those in favor signify by aye.
That's why, they requested it to go on us discussed, which is why I put discussed instead of.
So then, Mr. Ladner, want to go ahead and approve it?
What, what did you say?
They requested to go.
I don't understand, why don't we not discuss whether to let them go or not?
I think they just want to make sure that we're.
I think with the COVID, on the COVID, we said COVID.
Well, as of today, I would approve it. If something changes, then they don't need to go.
Got you. Okay, so we need a, you made a motion to approve, and you did a second, so all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty, we're gonna wait till ten-thirty on this. Item twenty-two, order taken off the table, confirm with the planning commission's decision to approve case file two oh one one HC one eight six for text amendment requested by Patrick Funk for Harris County zoning administration for approval of an amendment, basically Basically is for the short-term rentals. Do we have a motion to take off the table?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three. Order concurring with the planning commission's decision to approve the text amendment for the short-term rentals. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
All those opposed now. Motion carries. Item twenty-four. Order concurring with the planning commission's, I'm sorry, Patrick, I'll just...
Items twenty-four through twenty-nine are regular cases before the planning commission. If we'd ask that you concur with the recommendations of the planning commission.
Do we have a motion to concur? Items twenty-four through twenty-nine.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty. Order approving claims as listed to be paid from the tort account. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-one. Order spreading on the minutes personnel changes of sheriff's offices listed on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-two. Order concurring with private administrator on appointment as listed on file with payroll clerk. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-three. Order concurring with the road manager on appointment as listed on file with payroll clerk.
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-four. Order designating purchase clerk, chancer clerk county engineer and any department head as needed as board representatives to receive bids as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-five. Order accepting the best and lowest proposal received from Complete Environmental Remediation Company for the collection and disposal of hazardous, household hazardous waste. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-six. Order rejecting the proposal received from CW Mobile Service LLC for the Harrison County Beautification Commission's collection and disposal household electronic waste. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. That, that rejection is based on a mistake that they made, not us, putting it in the wrong pile. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. They submitted it at the time for the LL hazardous waste opening, and it was over pretty soon.
So they put it in there. They submitted that.
They submitted it.
Stay here. I'm finished.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-six. Is that where I am? No, thirty-six. Sorry. Order accepting the only proposal for magnolia data solutions in amount of twenty-three cents a pound for seventeen hundred and fifty-dollar minimum invoice billing amount for the beautification commission's collection and disposal of household electronic waste. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-eight. Order accepting the lowest and best bid in alternate number one of JW Puckett and Company in amount of three million five hundred and eight thousand for construction of the Harrison County Law Enforcement Academy. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item thirty-nine. Order accepting the best and only bid received of MMR Constructors, is what this says, but I don't think that's right, in the amount of two hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars for Harrison County Adult Detention Center radio upgrades. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let's recognize sheriff as he reports on a person's currently housed in a jail.
Uh, currently, we have six hundred twenty-seven, forty-five misdemeanors, hundred and eight females, twenty-three that are clear state arrest, and twenty-eight federal inmates.
Thank you. Item forty-one. Oh, yeah.
Sheriff, just one, one thing. Uh, we in good shape on spring break, what you know?
As far as I know, you're in good. Yeah, I hadn't heard anything positive, negative, anything, just that it's all the same, so we're just playing along with it.
All right.
For that week.
Item forty-one. Order approving payment of claims as listed below. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-two. Order approving sole source purchase of five bodyboard cameras and two complete in-car video from Metric Solution at a cost of fifty-one thousand eight eighty-six oh five. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-three. Order renewing agreement for canteen management making and services support for the Harrison County Adult Detention Center. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-four. Order authorizing road department to repay the parking lot at the Harrison County Adult Detention Center in estimated cost of a hundred and sixty-four thousand one fifty-three sixty-four. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I think that needs to be reworded. Um, not that the road department's gonna do that, but allow them to use county paving contractor to do this.
Got you. So we need to amend this to allow the Harrison County Adult Detention Center to use the county, Harrison County's paving contractor. Got you.
Don't do it.
No, we don't. We, we, we don't have time to do it, Sheriff. I'd love to do it for you.
And then all the prisoners will be on the window the whole time you're out there.
So we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-five. Order authorizing sheriff's office to sell one block model twenty-two asset number two-three-five-eight-oh to return investigator Michelle Carbine for a B of one dollar. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-six. Order approving mileage reimbursement for Rachel Roddy dispatch her period of June twenty-one twenty-one to June twenty-five twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-seven. Order approving mileage reimbursement for in-country travel for the following employees. Do we have a motion?
Got you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-eight. Order authorizing board president to execute the law stolen affidavit removing the following assets and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item forty-nine. Order authorizing disposal of assets per the attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same from inventory. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty. Order clearing various items surplus as per the attached list from the office of Judge Carl Price. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Let me add something, I'm sorry. So we declared him a surplus, and then he's gonna transfer to the clerks?
Their state, their state, it's the state equipment, so the state was declaring that surplus amount, they're gonna give it to the county.
Got you. Okay, thank you. Item fifty-one. Order authorizing reimbursement to the bridge fund from the various departments for work performed as follows. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-two. Order acknowledging receipt of June twenty-twenty-one procurement guard and travel card as follows. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-three. Order authorizing reimbursement to the general fund for work performed on the fire services vehicles. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-four. Order authorizing the refund lines as per the attached schedule. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-five. Order approving payment of claims as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-six. Order authorizing issuance of duplicate warrant for three oh nine forty-two to Midary, Alabama. Oh, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-seven. Order approving workforce development training agreement with Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College for defensive driving courses. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight. Order approving commercial sixteen section land lease agreement between Harrison County School District and Teresa Murray for property located in section sixteen township six, south range twelve west and the first judicial district. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-nine. Order approving a twenty-four-year sixteen section lease agreement by between Paschus Chan School District and Bobby Ladner for approximately point six-four acres to be used as right-of-way on Bad Day Road. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item fifty-eight. Um, excuse me.
Sixty.
It jumped back. Order adjudicating the women of Tim Holloman and Boyce Holloman to represent Harrison County and the Harrison County Board of Supervisors and A. Norris Hopkins and Hopkins for authority to represent Sheriff Peterson of Harrison County Sheriff's Department in the litigation matters styled as listed. Do we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-one. Order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-six on tax parcel one four one zero K zero three zero two seven zero zero one for two, twenty-eighteen taxes. It's erroneous and thus void appeticio for related purposes. Do we have a motion? Motion. Do we have a second?
Second. Discussion.
On record, this was a leasehold governmental entity that had a leasehold with the lease that had been canceled when they sold it for taxes. It was an error, it shouldn't have been sold for taxes. It was already been canceled before the tax sale took place.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-two. Order adjudicating the tax sale of August twenty-six twenty-nineteen on parcel number zero is one one A zero four zero seven four zero 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 for twenty-eighteen taxes. That was erroneous and thus void appeticio and for related purposes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
It's an inherent assessment and had the wrong classification of taxes. It's supposed to be... The tax assessor's error.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-three. Order adjudicating tax sale of August thirty-first on tax parcel number zero two zero eight zero nine zero one six zero zero two for twenty-nineteen taxes. That was erroneous and thus void appeticio. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Same deal.
Error, well, it was a whole different error, but it was on the, had it assessed in the wrong name. So it should have been sold. It's an error.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-four is basically a rerun. Order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-fifth for twenty-fifteen and twenty-sixteen taxes that were erroneous and thus void appeticio. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
What's up with this one?
Same as item sixty-one, it was a leasehold that had been canceled by the time the tax held took place.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-five. Order adjudicating tax sale of August twenty-eight twenty-seventeen and August twenty-six twenty-nineteen and August thirty-first twenty-twenty on parcel number zero eight one one F zero four zero seven five zero zero two for twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen taxes that are erroneous and thus void appeticio. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
I can't wait to hear this.
There in the notice of the, to the lease order, but they, it said the lease on it, but they didn't send it to the lease order, they sent it to the city, if I understand.
All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-six, order acknowledging receipt of the appraisal prepared by Allen Purvis of land situated in and being a part of section eleven, township five, South Rains thirteen West, First Judicial District, adjudicating the offer of the appraised value to the property owner to acquire right away from improvements to the McHenry Grove Bridge. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-seven, order approving the waiver of rental fees for the use of the Harris County fairgrounds by Pearl Lake, Mississippi on section number eighteen, twenty-twenty-one. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, I'm assuming that I'm prepared eyes. Motion carries. Order sixty-eight, I mean, discussion number sixty-eight, order adjudicating not arising expenditures listed necessary to advertise opportunities and resource of the Harris County, Mississippi payable for five-oh-two-one-oh-oh-five-two-two. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Item sixty-nine, discuss update on extending the use agreement of Black School District for the skate park property. Mr. Holloman.
Oh, I called him again on Friday with his play phone tags. I hope to get with him this week. Again, this is, I don't think it's going to be an issue, but I'll let you know. It's a county building, if the county needs to use it, use it.
Well, Willie's pretty chomping at the bit when he uses it.
Tell him to go.
So tell him to go, Timmy?
We own the building.
Okay. Let Willie know he can go.
Yeah, that's very important.
From getting there, once we're there, we got it.
It'll be, I don't think it'll be a problem.
I think the only problem is if we're selling it or leasing it, that's not the need permission, but if we're taking, if we use it, it's fine.
Right.
That's my understanding.
Item seventy, discuss COVID-nineteen protocol, Ms. Olrich.
What you wanted out?
Well, our numbers are going up.
The numbers are still going up. Continue to have more positive cases within the county employees. I mean, I don't know. We don't know if the RC anymore that are vaccinated that are getting COVID, that are getting COVID also, but it's, but it's probably about the same. I mean, you know, there's still other people who are not vaccinated that are getting COVID.
How is our protocol washing our, you know, our sterilization? We used to have people wiping down the floors all the time.
It's still, I mean, it's more than.
Is it less, we got lapses days?
Probably done last a little because of all the, you know, because we hadn't had cases, so have housekeeping pick back up on all that. We started ordering more, more cleaning supplies, more sanitation. They've been doing that within the last couple of weeks, so, um, but, you know, of course we didn't do the face mask and we haven't done the temperatures and all that, so. And as far as wanting to clean it, they get tested, they're sending them home for ten days if they test positive, so.
And that should be fourteen.
Anyone around there.
That's ten.
Should be fourteen.
We're just watching them if they have.
So we just want to remind everybody to wash their hands.
Yes, hand sanitize, wash your hands.
Be safe.
Yeah, you know, wash, keep your, keep your work center, work areas clean, and a kind of social distance if you can, I mean, if you're in your areas.
I suggest they get the vaccine. I had the vaccine and then I had COVID, but I don't, I think it lessened some of the symptoms because I have a lot of underlying illnesses that could have made it really bad for me. So, I was around three thousand people though in Maryland, so that's probably, probably where we got it.
I didn't need to inform our employees of various places that they can get the vaccine.
That's what I was going to suggest, because I know they were doing it at the school.
And encouraging.
Yeah.
One of the schools last week, but, or maybe get with Kent Nico and get him to come by here, he's willing to come, people that want to do it.
Set up again.
Yeah, let's just set it up here. They can bring their little RV thing and do it. So let's drive that both to the courthouse.
Because I know most of, I mean, the senior, I know we were worried about the senior centers and all with that, but most of the seniors have been vaccinated.
Most of them have been vaccinated.
And all the workers, I guess most of the workers have been vaccinated.
I want to say one more thing with vaccinations. If we're going to have a mobile thing here and encourage our employees, then we should also allow their families to come, because what's the use of getting them vaccinated if they're going to be around? So we should maybe add that.
Perfect, yeah.
And there is a system that is a air purifier that is absolutely what they use in hospitals across the nation. I'd like us to look into that for our, especially for our senior citizen centers and for our building. It's used in all hospitals across, I guess we'll go through the purchasing.
You got a proposal from Mr. Bark's group, you remember?
I know.
We just didn't act on it.
So, I'd like to, it's not that expensive.
Wasn't bad.
I thought it would be a lot more than what it was. I'd be willing to step out and.
Call him and, or Jody.
Jody, did you ever hear from Mr. Bark?
He brought it to us, represented it to us.
In Biloxi, no.
With the price and everything.
It was filters, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, it was, it was, it's not filters, it's an actual. I, it's great. Once you get that in your office, you do not have to wipe down and clean that. It cleans everything, you don't have to close up, it actually cleans the air on a daily basis. It's not a.
So Ms. Rocker, then obviously your purchasing agent hasn't had the information.
Well, we don't have any of that information.
We bought, I mean, we bought some of those little, I don't know if there's one in here now.
This is something that comes through the H-bag.
This is an actual cleaning, this is different, this is different than any, they use it in hospitals all the time to purify the air, and it is, it's also federally approved, FDA approved, it's one of the only FDA approved. It also has.
We'll get the info and then we'll put it on Monday's day.
It was probably right in the year last year, very near.
And then right before we go into this appeal, there's one agenda to the meeting. Order authorizing approving assistance with repair resurfacing of Indian Drive. It's not really a supply hold affair of Indian Drive within the city of Biloxi, as per the term of the inter-local government cooperation agreement between the city of Biloxi and near some town. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Okay. Do y'all need? Yeah, we're writing on a appeal at ten thirty.
I have a question about thirty-six and thirty-seven. I'm confused. They rejected a bid on thirty-six, it was twenty-one cents a pound with no minimum, and accepted a higher bid at point twenty-three with a minimum bid of seventeen fifty. Was this electronically bid? It looked like a bid package was submitted.
So the option is sealed or electronic? The Magnolia, they submitted theirs sealed. The other company submitted theirs electronically, and they submitted it in the category of the hazardous waste which opened first fifteen minutes before, so there's definitely time for that. So theirs was open at that particular time. As far as the minimum of seventeen fifty.
Was the bid disclosed to anybody when it was open?
Pardon?
Was it disclosed to anybody when it was open? When the bid was submitted, did anybody see it?
Okay, so nobody outside of the county.
All right, so.
So, no.
So we rejected the bid because it was submitted wrongly, but even though it's the lowest, I'm just trying, curious whether or not, that's the other one had a minimum of seventeen fifty. What concerns me is if you submitted one pound of electronic waste, as I read it, the minimum would be seventeen fifty, that'd be owed, that's owed to twenty-one cents, which you would owe twenty-one cents.
I went back, Kelly, we pulled previous invoices, and the reason we submit like that that covers his rental equipment that he has to bring to the site, previous invoices run about twenty-nine thousand to thirty thousand for electronic.
All right, so that's, I guess my question too, to the board is, I didn't look at it because I didn't realize what the issue was, whether or not that's a labelable defect.
Well, that's, that's what I asked him.
I didn't catch what you were talking about.
That's what I was asking him, was, who, whose fault was it? And apparently they submitted the bid.
It was their fault.
Their fault, yeah.
No question about that. The question I have in my mind is whether or not this board had the option to waive that as a defect, because they are in fact a little bitter. I don't have a problem that they, they messed up and the board could reject it for that reason. Question is whether or not the board has an option.
It's to have been.
It's two cents a pound tons, a lot apparently, how many pounds were the invoices?
It's twenty-nine, thirty thousand, about the average.
Yeah, I'm just.
And that, that was last year's price of twenty-three cents a pound.
So if the board wanted to table that, I'd look and see whether that's a labelable defect. That's my only question is whether or not the board wants to see if the.
I would, if I may, I would suggest that if we can go back and reconsider that and waive that decision until Tim gives us a legal opinion that we are.
So we, I will entertain a motion to reconsider thirty-five.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Thirty-six, or excuse me, thirty-six and thirty-seven, until our attorney can review that, get back to us.
I so moved.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
You need a motion to table it. Do we do that?
Now we need a motion to table.
Motion to table thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
Maybe I'll take it up by two o'clock when you have the table.
That's why, that's the question that I was asking.
Oh. Ms. Tomlin, do you have anything?
Unless the board has any questions at all, if anything, if the session or if we have anything in addition. Or also that we were just hired on or anything we didn't concern, or. Undang, proselytism, pointing.
Supervisor Ladner, you got anything?
No, no.
Mr. Jones?
I do, but I don't have the time about how to get it, get the damn, there's a, there's a work session, a workshop coming up, hosted by MAS, talks about the, how does the recovery act and somebody's spending.
Good. I have it on the.
Just want to get it approved for travel.
It's on next Monday. And then, only thing I had was, we need to discuss AMR's response times. I'm getting some calls that it's taking a little longer. Have y'all heard anything?
I can enlighten y'all on that if you want me to.
Pardon me?
I can enlighten y'all on that if you want me to.
Yes, please.
Oh, you tell them to get, um, the, I think it's because of, and I'm not speaking for AMR at all, but I think it's because of the same issue that everybody's having with, with employees. And I think that they've changed their leave time from a take it or leave it to, to a, to a concurrent leave time where it just keeps adding up. So I think it's, I think that's the big difference. People are taking their leave because they have to or they're going to lose it. But the, the response times have been bad in Harrison County. Biloxi's had two incidents here recently where they had a cardiac patient, they didn't even show up, they had to get Jackson County to come over and take them, and they had another one on an infant drowning, they never showed up for them. So it's, uh.
And I got one call from a guest at Bubba's, you said it took him thirty minutes to be there when his wife was having a.
So it's, it is, it is an issue, I don't think it needs to be addressed, but AMR has been very good to us for a long time, and if it's employee issues, then that's, that's one thing, but if it's just merely not fulfilling the contract, then that's another.
Are y'all okay with me asking them maybe to come next Monday to?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, okay.
Definitely.
And I think that's all I got. Ms. Rocker, what you got?
Um, I was wanting to clear out, we had, we had given SMPDD a contract or entered into a contract with them about the CARES Act, but there are different facets, and that, they may cover that, Kent with MAS may cover, but there's several different facets of that money that is coming down in different characteristics, I guess. There's different characteristics of each kind of the money in each box. It's almost as complicated as, you know, the, the other money that we had that came down. I'm not making a lot of sense, I'm sorry, I have COVID brain, but anyway, so I just want to make sure that we know about every facet of the money that's coming down and how it can be spent, what it can be spent on. So.
You're talking about the rescue act.
Yeah, there's a difference.
There's rescue, there's CARES, there's, there's a litany of.
But the MAS workshop is only.
The MAS workshop is for the rescue act.
Oh, okay. I knew, which is one of.
And does that, when we let that contract for CARES, did that also include?
We didn't have the rescue act money at that time.
I don't think we.
Does that include with the CARES or is that second?
No, I don't have the rescue.
I'm just making sure. Somebody had asked me about it.
Yeah, I'm not.
Tell, I'll tell.
Ms. Powers, you got anything?
If I can get it out. It's rare, but I have nothing today. It's been a good week.
The only other thing I had was at the Diaville Civic Center, they had a, they have an event coming up.
Oh, yeah.
And they want to get a permit, to give beer, a temporary beer permit. I guess they're having an event, they want to be able to buy kegs of beer, they're going to give it away, they're not going, you have to write a letter to the Department of Revenue.
They have to have a.
But they want us to write a letter telling the Department of Revenue that we're okay with them having beer, which I don't know that we've ever had to do that before, but.
No, my attorney just walked up.
I know.
We still got one.
We have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I didn't see you sitting in the corner, I apologize.
Have we gotten that before?
Typically, I was favorite, we have written in the past, typically the vendor doesn't give it away, he's selling it, and we write a letter and then they issue the permit.
Okay, so do we need a motion then to write the letter, to approve the letter or not?
They also have to make sure that they have security.
Yeah, they got.
They have security.
They got that.
That's part of the rental agreement.
Yeah, that's all.
It's typically.
Do we need to make a motion to, okay, so we're going to just write a letter?
They're not selling it.
Perfect. Okay, it's ten thirty. Mr. Bond? Okay, Mr. Bond, I'm sorry.
All right, first we'll go over the appeal process. I'll introduce the case, and it's a little bit of a complicated one that I could add. Then we'll have a presentation from the appellant, in this case, it's the applicant, and there's a maximum of three speakers, ten minutes each. And then we'll hear from the opponents, again, a maximum of three speakers, ten minutes each, and then the appellant will get a five-minute rebuttal at, at the end of that.
Madam President, may I ask you a question? There's two parts to this appeal, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
What would happen if, and it's bifurcated as I understand, what happened if we denied the first and approved the second? Will the project continue or one is basically depending on the other?
The, the very first part is a variance request to allow double-fronted lots, and a double-fronted lot is a lot that has the front and the rear facing a public road. So in this case, the applicant is asking for eleven lots that the rear of the house would face Old Highway forty-nine. So if the variance was to fail, if you deny the variance, they would have to come up with a new layout that does not necessarily improve the project. And, and I'll, I'll go over this some more in a minute. The second part is a conditional use permit, which is the subdivision layout. If that was to fail, they would have to come up with a new design of the subdivision. The third part is a rezoning. The overall property is about sixty-five acres, forty acres of the sixty-five is already zoned, R-one, low-density residential. It's a smaller, two parcels that are asking for the rezoning. So the rezoning is for a, a percentage of the property, about a third of the property.
Got you. Okay, so this appeal, part one, filed by Gulf Coast Development and Design LLC for TCB Construction, requesting a variance to allow the lots one to eleven have double-road frontage with a buffer instead of the required single-frontage for the purpose of creating a one-forty-three-acre subdivision. Is, and want to hear anyone present for the appellate?
May I make this assumption? Can y'all all speak up because we can't hear you?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is anyone here for the appellate?
Yes, good morning, Madam President.
Renee, would you be our timekeeper, please?
We need to explain, but.
Hey, just. Okay, Mr. Nell, state your name and address for the record.
All right, good morning, supervisors and officials and Madam President, I'm Chanel Bligh with Dixie, Dixie, and Fanica, and I'm here on behalf of Gulf Coast Development and Design LLC. Kenneth Jones is one of the members, and he is here this morning. Also, Mr. Jones submitted an appeal on, as Mr. Bond mentioned, the, the three issues, rezoning, variance, and a conditional use permit. Those were all denied at the planning commission level. I guess I should have started with this. I do have a package, ma'am, maybe we approach and give, give you a package, and part of this, the first part is actually my presentation, just so it will be in the record, and then there are a few exhibits primarily to, for example, on the topo map, it was not real clear at the planning commission level. So there's really nothing new, it's just to clarify, it's better copies primarily.
You can only hear what's already in the record.
This was in the record, but it was not clear. There's going. Uh, the, well, let me clarify that. Some of the items, the topo map was in the record on appeal. There are some additional items, the comprehensive plan as it relates to development in this area is in there. It was mentioned and discussed at the planning commission, it's just I've given you a copy for, for ready reference purposes.
That is part of the record, just by law, it's part of the county code of the county. Actually have to have that in the record.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. All right, by way of a brief introduction, Gulf Coast Development and Design was the agent for the applicant. The applicant is listed as TCB Development. I think y'all may be familiar with them. They're the owner of the property. Gulf Coast Development and Design has a contract to purchase the property, but it's contingent on these applications. So if the applications are approved, Gulf Coast Development Design will proceed with the purchase of the property. TCB will not have any involvement in it, either further ownership or development. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that, since it does say that they are the agent for TCB. Of the three matters that were presented, there was, as we've mentioned, rezoning, conditional use, and, and the variance, and the zoning, I think it kind of makes more sense to discuss that first, because if zoning's not, if it's not rezoned, then the rest of them really will.
That was my question.
That's what, yeah.
Right, you, I, I agree.
Both appeals are at ten thirty, so we can do.
Mr. Ladner, so, these, this package addresses all three of them, so if, if you don't have any objection, may I address the rezoning first, or do you want me to? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, of these, there, there's three total parcels. There's an eighteen-point-seven-five-acre parcel that's zone A-one, there's a three-point-six acre parcel that is zone E-one, and then there's a forty-three acre parcel that is already zoned, R-one. The, the plan is a one-hundred-and-forty-three acre development. Actually, that, that could fit within the entire R-one's own parcel, that forty-three acre parcel, and we could still have over a million square feet for roads, for green space, for detention ponds and everything. So this is, while it does sound like a lot, being one-hundred-and-forty-three, we really don't even need the other. We want those because we want a lower density for, for lots of reasons, and we'll get into some of those. But I do want to point out that this would be, it would be allowed, the one-hundred-and-forty-three within just that forty-three acres, and still have over half of the property available for green space and roads and infrastructure.
Ma'am, you said that if we approved the, the zoning change itself, that the size of the lots will be increased, or it will simply allow for more amenities other than lot sizes?
Well, the, the plan as it is, is to develop the entire, all three parcels.
But if we approve all, you said that you could do it within that.
Right, and that, that application is not pending before you to do it within the, the forty-three acre. I'm, I was just pointing out that, that we, we could do it, the one-hundred-and-forty-three.
The point that I'm asking you, if we approve, if the board were to approve the zoning change.
Right.
I think R-one is what you're questioning.
It is to R-one.
To the zoning change.
Right.
But what's your answer?
We approve that, well, that, is the plans to increase the lot sizes because that gives you more room? Or is it simply to maybe create other amenities?
Well, the, the lot sizes right now in the applications before you are twelve thousand, I believe it's twelve thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty-five, roughly, maybe, per unit. So the, the minimum required is six thousand, so right now we're already double. So we, we don't have a plan.
That's in the R-one.
That's in all.
In all of it.
In the whole, the whole sixty-five acre.
You're trying to change an E-one, you're trying to, what, what if you do agricultural and E-one? Now, can you, can you put a twelve thousand square foot lot in an E-one?
No, sir, it's a three-acre minimum lot size.
That's what I'm saying, and, and the agricultural, there's no. And in the agricultural, there's no, obviously, you can't go in and put a bunch of small lots in an agricultural.
Right.
I don't know if you're understanding my question.
Well, perhaps I'm not, because our application now is to include those additional two parcels if they were rezoned. So I was just using that for illustrative purposes to show that they could go to smaller lots. And if we did just the one-hundred-and-forty-three on the forty-three-acre parcel, those lots would decrease in size. But we're overdouble what we could be right now.
What they're trying to do is increase the lots and also the amount of drainage that they have.
That's what I'm trying to ask, whether, when you approved the zoning change, that allowed you more property to develop?
It does, and it would be over seventeen acres.
And are you going to use that to increase the size of the lot, or are you just going to use it to put more houses in there?
We will not be increasing it beyond that one-hundred-and-forty-three acres, or, excuse me, one-hundred-and-forty-three units. There's over seventeen acres of green space.
You're including those already in that plan, I understand.
Yes, including...
You're assuming that we would approve those changes, so that's already included in, lot sizes included in the plan.
That's true, because they were all submitted together, the request for the rezoning and the conditional use permit. So you are correct on that. The plan includes seven detention ponds. We do have information, Mr. Jones did speak with Ms. Turner. She was very pleased with the drainage plan. I know that was one issue that was brought up particularly by opponents and residents in the neighborhood, but she was...
Elector fish.
Right. She did indicate that there was a very solid drainage plan, and that she may have a few items she would want to tweak on it a little bit that would ensure, really, that there was no drainage onto any adjoining property of hers. So, Mr. Jones...
Our roadways?
Ma'am?
Our roadways? Like the new culverts that we just put in under West Wortham Road? All that roadwork we did, it'll be able to handle that as well, of course.
Mr. Jones is...
I'll see him personally. He'll be able to handle that.
I would say by the time the design is final, I think they can get there yet, but from what I've seen, they're on their track.
And also, if there were other conditions, we certainly realize that we have to and also want to satisfy any of the engineering issues, drainage issues, roadway issues. There were some concerns at the planning commission level about access to some of the green space and park areas, and we can certainly work with any conditions and work with the county on those to ensure that those concerns are addressed and properly satisfied. Mr. Jones submitted an excellent appeal on each of these, outlining and addressing each of the required areas. So I would like to focus more of my few minutes on a couple of things. We do have well-served letters from Harrison County Community Authority and Robinwood Utilities for water and sewer. Although these, the density unit per acre comes in at about point-four-five units per acre, some of the, like Robinwood, for example, is just a rare point-five density, but those do not have water or sewer particularly. So those have to be half-acre lots. These lots have water, they have sewer, and importantly, also, for drainage easement or drainage issues and environmental issues, there are no wetlands in these lots. Y'all know, people tend to fill those if they're in their backyard, and that can have a real bad effect on drainage. But there's no wetlands on any one of these one-hundred-and-forty-three-acre, forty-three lots.
Ms. Chanel, so you get three speakers, ten minutes each, or you can choose to take the whole thirty minutes. So you can use ten, it's up to you.
I can use...
Did we use up her time in my question? She should be granted that time.
She's got twenty more minutes. She's still got twenty minutes.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure that we didn't, I didn't use up her time question.
When the board's speaking, I pause it.
Good.
Mr. Jones might have something to say.
Good.
Well, let's let him, it's up to you, you've got twenty minutes.
If I could just go through a few more, and I would like to let Mr. Jones speak with you also. All right, as far as the comprehensive plan, y'all know, there were lots of officials involved in that, lots of planning professionals. This is the plan that developers are supposed to look at, to look at future growth and look at what the design is for particular areas. This particular area is in a G3 zone. And although these sectors that are outlined in the comprehensive plan don't change the zoning itself, when you do have a zoning application, it's, you should be looking, the developers certainly should be looking before they're asking for rezoning, as to what the county's ultimate plan is. So we are in a G3, and in the comprehensive plan, under G3, goal number one is to ensure that Harrison County prepares for growth. You're going to have growth. It won't always be easy, but it's going to, it's going to happen, and that's the entire purpose of your plan. Strategy A under this goal is to provide guidance for future growth and development. And then Strategy A, Action One under this Strategy A, is to make the comprehensive plan named to residents, developers, property owners, to be aware of the policies and the recommendations that are in there. G3 sector consists of locations along high-capacity thoroughfares that can support substantial commercial development. This property is just west of, well, almost just west of forty-nine. There's the railroad tracks in there also. We're not asking for commercial development here. There is plenty of that in close proximity. These are on major thoroughfares. You've got forty-nine, you have Old forty-nine. Actually, the property itself is on Old forty-nine and West Wortham. So those are all major thoroughfares. Strategy B is to promote medium-to-high-density residential and regional commercial development in intended G3 sectors where centralized water and sewer is available. We're not looking even for those, medium or high-density. We are asking for an R1 zone for just this nineteen acres that's a low-density residential, and we're not asking for commercial, as I mentioned, and we have water and sewer. So that all fits squarely within that comprehensive plan. Goal three is to enhance and preserve the environment, and one of the focuses is protecting water quality by detaining stormwater runoff before it leaves the property and requiring open spaces. So I mentioned of seventeen acres of open spaces, which is almost the amount we're asking to be rezoned from the A1 and the R1, excuse me, A1 and E1. And as I've mentioned, as far as the drainage, they have a good plan. They're willing to make it better, if that's what's necessary. I realize Ms. Turner hasn't had an opportunity to review it in depth, but we're ready, we're ready for that and willing to make whatever recommendations, follow whatever recommendations that she would give on that.
And Pat, engineering does have the last say-so on approvals, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, but this is a very preliminary, no engineer drawings have been done for the lots or the streets.
But I just wanted to make that a part of the record, that before anything, before shovel or dirt is moved, they have to be approved by our engineers.
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, goal four, under the comprehensive plan is to provide quality housing choices for all residents. And in the G3 sector, it's providing that it's in close proximity to employment centers and services and designed to create higher-density housing. We are right there with all the commercial unemployment opportunities and are just seeking, again, low-density residential. And lastly, as far as the comprehensive plan anyway, concentrated residential development is what this G3 sector is, which is three or more housing units per acre, and we're at point-four-five, at least for the overall density. So we come in significantly less dense than allowed by the, or suggested by the comprehensive plan.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
Even though that's what the plan calls for, how does that density relate to the surrounding neighborhood? In reference to the density of the surrounding neighborhood?
Okay. Many of the lots in Robinhood, Robinwood, excuse me, that are just to the west are about point-five-five to point-five-eight per acre.
Sure it's not larger than that?
Well, I'm sure there are some.
Five years.
I'm sure there are some. And there are also some out to the west, and I can, I'm not sure of the name of the subdivision, but there are some that are significantly smaller than that out there also. For a septic, you have to have a half-acre lot, so yes, I'm sure there are some, but there are, there are lots out there that are also approximately a half an acre. So we're coming in just under that, but still far less than the three per acre suggested by the comprehensive plan, or even multifamily is also in the comprehensive plan. And we're certainly not looking to put apartments or condominiums or other multipurpose housing in there.
So he could take the forty-three acres and put in high-high-density sixty-foot lots, and, but he has chosen not to do that.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That would fit. And even with one-hundred-and-forty-three, with the forty-three-acre parcel, you're looking at about one-point-eight million square feet. Those one-hundred-and-forty-three lots would only take up about eight-hundred thousand of those square feet. So even with that density, you'd still have over half of that property available for infrastructure and for green space. So, I mean, we're talking about a big piece of property, and even if they did make the lot smaller and put it in there, over half of it's still going to be used for something other than a purbius, purbius use.
Since you mentioned green space, Chanel, tell me about the trees and the buffers and all the things that he plans to keep. That's what I'm concerned about.
All right. Well, about a, almost, well, I guess about a fourth of it will still be green space, seventeen acres. Certainly, the goal is to have some parks in there. There's seven planned detention ponds. If they need more, or the recommendation is for less, they're certainly willing to adjust those. I'd like to, since you mentioned this buffer, also, on the variance, the request is, or the plan is to put a fence there, so there, while there will be technical access on two streets, there will, there will not be actual access. There will be a fence, and then there will be twenty feet of buffer between the fence and the back lot line, and there will be...
Trees.
There will be, yes.
Original trees that stay there, not by sand. Okay, thank you.
Well, there will be trees that stay there, and there may be other that need to be brought in also. We can, we can address that, but it will be indigenous type of buffer that would be brought in. So that provides both more privacy to the homes, but it provides, it eliminates your access to West Wortham.
It's also a buffer for sand, right?
It will be a buffer for sand, it will be a buffer for view from West Wortham. And frankly, just a safety issue. Mr. Jones and his team did quite a bit of studies on the traffic and the congestion and determined that having one entrance on Old forty-nine and one entrance on West Wortham will have the least traffic impacts and will be the safest, safest way to do that. So there will be, actually, there will also be a buffer, the fence and all that we're talking about, the variance, because I'm, Old forty-nine, but there will also be buffers on West Wortham also. So for a lot of that area, the homes probably won't even be physical.
Just for a point of discussion, I don't think anybody has a problem much with buffers, but when you talk about these green spaces and all these other amenities, be knowledgeable with the fact that you're going to, that you're going to have to deal with the maintenance of those things at some point in the future, and whose responsibility it is to do it. The developer can put them in, and it's all nice. Ultimately, it either falls to the homeowners' associations or to this board supervised with taxpayers' money to maintain those amenities. So it sounds good, something, at some point, and I know I'm dealing with that, Tim can attest to that. These parks and all that, they sound good, but there's cost to maintenance of all that.
There's been some research that's done on that, Marlin, and the city of Biloxi, they have, if the homeowners' association fails to maintain any extra amenities in their neighborhood, they can be assessed a certain amount of millage.
I think that's an issue, Tim has addressed that you can't, there's an issue about that just assigning specific millage requirements to a specific area, not county-wise.
We have taxing districts all over this county.
You have to create a taxing district.
You have to create a special taxing district to do that. And that's going to be an issue with the community as well.
Well, I think if, I think if it's written into their deed, that if, you know, if they don't maintain, it's their responsibility, and if they just like, you know, short-term, short-term rental.
I'm not arguing with you about that, I'm simply saying that at some point, then the board, whoever's sitting on this board, has to make a decision to create a special taxing district to maintain that, and then you're dealing with those folks.
Yeah, again, or four.
Well, the intent is to have the homeowners' association formed, and it will be their responsibility, I certainly understand.
How long will it be there?
Well, the covenants will say in perpetuity.
And Raco and I almost got lynched one night when we suggested they need to form a new, the HOA.
Oh, really?
At a meeting, they were not happy.
Nobody wants to pay dues, and nobody wants to be told what to do with their property.
They're not happy with that, don't tell them you're fixing to create a special taxing district.
Right. Well, the homes, I believe, in the neighborhood are roughly around two-hundred thousand dollars. These are going to start at between two-hundred-and-fifty and two-seventy and up, so I don't know what that says ultimately as far as an HOA, but hopefully if you can buy one of their houses in there, then your HOA will be amply supported.
How many lots, one-hundred-and-forty-seven?
One-hundred-and-forty-three. Three or seven?
One-hundred-and-forty-three.
Madam President, I can ask you a question?
Yes.
Is this, is, I'm just trying to remember right, is this West Wortham on the left-hand side, behind the store? The property's been cleared forever? Or is this on the right-hand side? So behind, it's behind the... Church. The church and the Dollar General and the...
It's the northeast corner of West Wortham and Old forty-nine.
Where they cleared it out before and then let it grow back.
Is there a pond there?
You're okay? While we listen to the appellate, let's remember this.
Okay, I know where you're at, okay. I'm waiting.
Go ahead, Ms. Neal.
Okay.
Renee Hemmer, it's time to see you.
Nine minutes, one second.
Sure.
So you have nine minutes, just so you know, total.
Okay.
You want to share some with Mr. Jones?
I do, I will wrap, I will wrap this up. Let me just highlight a couple of the big, the big items I know people are concerned about, will there be additional drainage issues? I think that's very unlikely, and I don't take saying that lightly, because I know developments tend to cause drainage issues. But the surrounding property is primarily drained to this property, there's wetlands to the north, there's the Biloxi River to the north. That probably won't be developed, but it's not owned, it's not subject to this anyway. You've got the railroad to the east and the ditches there, and with seven detention ponds, I really just don't, and I think, obviously, the county will need to concur in... obviously, the county will need to concur in, in that when they sign off on drainage plans. Will there be an increase in traffic? Sure, at least somewhat. I don't know if it'll be as terrible as it's being made out. These, this property's not deep into those subdivisions. So it's right there at those major thoroughfares. So that's where the, any additional traffic will be. And yes, it may have an impact back in there. But it's not like we're going back on all these small streets through all these subdivisions to put this subdivision. It's right there at the, at the thoroughfare.
Janelle, it's gonna be behind the existing home, Old Forty-Nine, behind those. And it would be behind the Dollar General, behind the dance studio?
No, no.
Someone go that far back?
No, those are farther. It'll be.
I'm with you on the map. I just, I don't know how far it's gonna go back.
To the railroad.
Yes, to, to the railroad. All right. We're only asking for nineteen acres. And I realize nineteen acres is a lot. But in the overall sixty-five acres that we're, we're seeking to develop, nineteen acres is, is really not that much. This was envisioned by everyone who had an input in the comprehensive plan. This is a high-growth sector. It's, it's not something that we're coming in and, and just completely trying to upset the apple cart. It, it was planned.
Can I hear from, can I hear from Mr. Jones? He's gonna run out of time.
Do they have additional time for Republicans?
Yeah, five minutes. All right, let's go ahead, you guys. About five left. Seven, Eliot.
Seven minutes.
Ken Jones, Gulf Coast Development Design, nine-one-nine, Second Street, Gulfport, Mississippi. So Janelle did go over most everything. And I just emphasized a couple of things. One is, there's about a thousand acres of property that's actually zoned R1 that's next to the school already. So this piece of property in relation to that, from a traffic standpoint, one of the main considerations is traffic that the residents have brought up in this surrounding area. First, I spent about thirty minutes out there looking at traffic patterns, looking at how they return and everything. The traffic buildup, mostly that I can tell, is actually headed south on Old Forty-Nine, trying to take a left onto West Wortham, getting back out to Forty-Nines in the morning. On the flip side, when they're returning home, it's a right entrance to go back to the school, right? So there's not as much stacking. So we put one of those entrances on West Wortham that would allow for about eight cars to even be stacked up before there would be any traffic issues there. And then the other one will be on the north side, on Old Forty-Nine, on the north side of where you turn left to go, continue by the school on West Wortham. If that makes sense. Let me look at kind of your map. But, so from a traffic standpoint and a growth standpoint, I'll say that whole area is prime for growth at one point. Up until now, there has not been sewer out in that location. So the reason that most of those lots are half-acre lots or above is because there was septic and septic systems, which require a half-acre lot, and there was water. There is actually a lift station that is on our property already that was installed by Arizona County Utility Authority in anticipation for this development. So the previous plan for this development had one hundred and fifty-eight lots and two and a half acres of wetland impact. They squeezed lots into every little nook and cranny. They actually had about the same size lots that we had, but not as much green space. And they squeezed them in, impacted more wetlands and everything else. So when we took it over, we lost fifteen lots out of the subdivision, reduced that wetland impact from two and a half acres down to a half acre, where it's actually point four, five acres of impact. And the only reason even for those impacts is a couple of crossings. And then the rear of lots to make sure that those wetlands aren't included in the rear of people's lots. So they don't get filled in later. Then we have problems like we've had in some other districts. So I just kinda wanted to point out those two things. This, this area is going to, it's got water and sewer. We've got a huge water treatment plant, or sewer treatment plant that's about to come online that's been not in use since Katrina. Got a nine-hundred lot subdivision that's going to the south of this development. And the only way for us to grow on the Mississippi Gulf Coast that doesn't act, that has water and sewer, that doesn't have overabundance of wetlands, and that's not in a flood zone, is north. Most of the cities have been fully developed in that respect. And where you see water and sewer is where you see growth. We're actually doing much less, as Janelle adequately pointed out, than what was planned by the comprehensive plan. So they saw, when they planned this thing out for 2030, they saw this as a multifamily, commercial, some sort of site like that. I don't think so. I think that this is much better as a low-density residential subdivision. Are they less than the surrounding area? Maybe by a small amount when you look at the whole density. We're doing zero point four or five acres per lot. They're at zero point five eight acres per lot. But we have water and sewer. We are actually lower than the anticipated growth pattern. And we're doing everything we can to alleviate traffic. More homes are gonna equal more traffic. There's no way around it. I'm not gonna be able to find a study that says that we're adding one hundred and forty-three houses to anywhere in, in the county. It is not gonna increase traffic in that location. So we have to do our best, given that we know that there's traffic, to, to make sure that it doesn't impact current residents and create even more problems. And that's why we put that entrance on West Wortham. That's another reason why we have the variance is so we don't have those cars pulling directly out onto Old Forty-Nine. If we didn't get the variance for those eleven lots, then those lots could face Old Forty-Nine, and you'd have eleven different driveways there, or more, and West Wortham. I didn't like that idea. I thought it would be a traffic and a safety concern. Turn them inside, let's put a buffer on the outside and make it a vegetated buffer. To your question, we will leave as many trees of those as we can. There may be grading issues. If we don't have them, we'll plant some more trees along there to make sure that they grow up home as soon as possible. So our plan is to leave as many trees as possible on the site. Obviously, nobody wants a pine tree next to their house. So don't wanna say that there's not gonna be a lot of plants, a lot of pine trees on the site. But my goal of leaving the amount of common areas, seventeen acres, about quarter of the site vacant is, are unclear and untouched, is, so we can leave that. We can embrace them. We don't have drainage issues. I know that's been a big problem. So if you have any questions, I know we have a rebuttal and things like that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Just a, just a comment that we've been dealing with a lot. We seem to let water and sewer, availability of water and sewer drivers. And the assumption is that if water and sewer is available, then we automatically can get to high density. And I don't necessarily agree with that. I think just because we have water and sewer, we need to take in consideration the neighborhoods and what's existing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We need to take consideration in the neighborhoods and as an assumption that I don't agree with, that just 'cause you have water and sewer, we automatically need to go in with high-density neighborhoods. Well, that adversely affects the people that are already there. So.
I don't think this is high-density.
I don't wanna be premature in my discussion, but I think that's a problem that we've been dealing with. And we've made a tremendous effort to provide water and sewer. And that has caused this high-density development. And I think that's part of the planning that was done, right, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
Assuming water and sewer is coming in. But is there really a need for that high density?
First, there was a, a plan. All the plans said we needed ten thousand houses across the county. And they wanted to move as many houses north off Highway Ninety as possible because that was really the.
Did that materialize?
Yes, sir.
No. And we put in water and, and I'm gonna admit something here. And Tony, you're well aware of this. We put in all this water and sewer with false, with false information, that there's gonna be this tremendous growth north of Interstate Ten. We spent two hundred and forty million dollars of grant monies, and that never materialized.
And we did put the paper to the pencil, a pencil to the paper, as three hundred percent growth that they were expecting.
Yeah.
Which is unbelievable. But I fought that battle and lost it.
And that was the justification for the money.
But these are not, these are not high-density, if I'm looking at it. This is R1, correct? Correct, R1.
That's a median.
Hold up.
What is it, median? It's called low, R1 is low-density residential.
Low-density. Which is, which, what's the size of that lot?
As small as possible, it's six thousand square feet.
Which is approximately.
Sixty about one hundred.
Yeah.
And y'all are doubling that, right?
Right, just over twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand square feet, what's?
A quarter acre.
Quarter acre. A quarter acre. That's why this and neighborhoods, we need to think about all of that. But I don't wanna be premature. I want them to have a chance to rebuttal, and I'd like.
Yeah, let's stay on track, if you don't mind. So we're gonna hear now from.
Just have rebuttal.
We're gonna hear now from the applicants. Let's go back. I don't know who's speaking for y'all, but you can have three people, three people. And they can have ten minutes each. Or you can have one person speak the whole thirty minutes. Or you can have two spend fifteen minutes each. So y'all need to figure out who three people's gonna be, or if you want this gentleman to have the whole thirty minutes. But we're gonna start with you, give you a name.
Thank you. My name's William Meslik. I live at one-eight-five-eight-one, West Wortham Road, Socia, Mississippi.
And if you don't mind, we'll time you in ten-minute intervals so that you can decide if you want to.
Certainly. Thank you. Speaking generically from all the comments that I've received from my neighbors on Facebook sites and on Nextdoor sites and everything else. But I wanna back up just a second. I wanna apologize to Ms. Raco because I actually had a question when you said you did the work on West Wortham. That's a big culvert at the bottom, so I'm gonna back off of that. You know, they're talking about the lot sizes in Robinwood. Most of our lot sizes up there are an acre lots. Very few are smaller than that. A lot of us, most of us have septic, I mean, sewer, septic systems. I'm gonna go into my statement here now. I wanna thank you, my neighbors, for allowing me to speak. I wanna speak on three topics. Schools, infrastructure, and traffic. Speaking anecdotally, I was told by some, some that my subjects didn't need to be discussed because they were already taken care of. And frankly, I'd like to know who took care of them. Was it in the plan? Was it, you know, how did it get taken care of? So I'm just gonna talk about them anyway. Schools. Well, in Socia, we have two schools. We have West Wortham, we have Socia Elementary. Both schools are pretty much at capacity. For years, they've been at capacity. And West Wortham still has trailers behind it that they use for training, special projects, and other things. But they're actively used trailers. They don't do the work in the school. I don't know what the current school ratio is, student-teacher ratio. But I know when I looked at it years ago, when my grandson went there and we're raising our grandson, I didn't believe it was intense. I mean, he had twenty-nine students in his class in fifth grade. Yes, pretty dense, in my opinion. It's not clear at all if how the new West Harrison Middle School might impact the West Wortham Middle School. You know, is students from there gonna go down to West Harrison Middle School? Are they gonna remain up there? If they go down to West Harrison, it opens up, obviously, half of West Wortham School. I've tried to find out if any redistricting would be done to accommodate relief, the large number of students who already attend West Wortham, but feels that the stats will remain as it is now. There won't be much change. The additional number of houses might indicate between seventy-five and one hundred and fifteen more students to attend one of the schools I mentioned. The aerial school for the, for this project is West Wortham Middle School. It is not Socia Elementary, uh, West Wortham Elementary and Middle School. Additional number of students, which seemingly required, associated increase in buses and transportation for the students to and from the school, which would increase traffic in an already heavily trafficked area. The proposed egress to and from the development is along Old Highway Forty-Nine, which already has issues with traffic capacity and speed. Infrastructure becomes affected as our water, sewer, drainage, electricity, internet, and road access usage become further strained. We wonder how water will be affected. Are there plans to install new wells to supply the water to the new development or to use the two existing wells within the Robinwood community? I've lived in my home for around twenty-three years and have experienced random water outages over those years, typically with no notification whatsoever from the water utility company, save for maybe three times. Twenty-three years, three times, someone's knocked on my door. Fellow said the water may be out for a few hours. While I say we have water outages three times, it means I've been, since I moved my house, no advance notice of any sort, just a knock on the door. One time, my wife was in the shower, the water went off. She was a nurse, had to get to work. Wasn't real nice, you know? We worked it out. When I spoke to the fellow who works for the water department, and it seems that there's only two of them that work for the water department to come out and do all this work. Very nice guy. And he just said, they do everything. They take care of it themselves. They work weekends, they do everything. The problem is, the water appears to be worked on in the main valves. Across from my house is a main valve. I've seen that main valve changed out a number of times. Never once did we get notification of a water outage. We never got boil-water notices for any of this stuff. And there's just a lack of communication between our water supplier and the neighborhoods. When your water comes out, after they do the.
Excuse me if I can interrupt. Marlon, that is the public service.
No, no. What he's talking about is a certificated area that is not the public water supplier. Mentioned that we, I think, built in a custody transfer station. What, what will happen is, if I understand it correctly, the certificated owner will buy water from the utility authority, but we will not be maintaining. The utility authority, which is the public water, will not be maintaining that system. We'll simply be selling water to it. So that's a certificated water area that he's talking about. It's not the utility authority, it's not a public.
That's what I thought.
It's a private certificated area.
So that you know that?
I do know that.
Privately owned and.
I do know who owns it, and I do know who manages it. And then I also know who owns it. It's TCB down at Robinwood Utilities, Robinford's Utilities.
It will not, if this is, if this development is approved, will not change that. The only, the only thing that I think Mr. Jones is saying is that they will be purchasing the water from us rather than digging additional wells.
I understand.
When I say, uh, I'm talking about the Harris County Utility Authority.
All right, thank you.
So trying to contact our existing water suppliers, not impossible, just next to, not a weekend, you can't get a hold of them at all if you have an issue. And that's pretty ridiculous. You've mentioned sewer disposal. You've mentioned it, I apologize. And I don't wanna talk to y'all directly. My problem is, the infrastructure appears to be there, but is it all the way there back to the lift station, which I believe is down south of the little Biloxi River? I might, you know, on my corner, and I live directly on the corner of West Wortham and Old Forty-Nine, I have a sewer cover on that corner. You know, there's all that tied all the way back to the lift stations and to the sewer plant. Because if it's not, we're gonna have traffic nightmares as they're installing that infrastructure for plenty to get back to those areas. And frankly, you know, I'm afraid that what this may mean is, if they go online, that some of us over in Robinwood may be forced online. And I sort of like my eighteen dollars to thirty dollars a month order bill. You know, that's, that's pretty nice. Yeah.
When it's working.
Move to go for it.
When your wife's not taking a shower?
Yeah.
Like it?
Um, you know, electricity around the area, infrastructure seems to be adequate. I get power outages, brownouts quite often, but that's trees on limbs, on wires and everything else. Telephone and internet, you know, we, we lack internet capacity up in that area. Um, I subscribe through, uh, AT&T, and I get a quarter of the bandwidth that I pay for, and they have no way of increasing it. Um, it's a shame. There's really limited access to internet up there and, and providers, um, with reliable, controllable, um, internet. I do know that after Katrina, uh, there was some fiber rundown with West Wortham, but I don't know to what extent that was run or how far. Um, drainage is a huge concern for us. We already deal with the overflow, and, and I want to back up to what the sheriff said. I have always called the road from Highway forty-nine to Old forty-nine, Wortham Road. So, I'm gonna refer to that as Wortham Road, if you don't mind, just for clarity reasons. Um, along Wortham Road, Old Highway forty-nine and West Wortham Road, during any rainfall or a light, a light rainfall, we start having, um, water sheeting across the road. In particular, it happens after, uh, what used to be Repson Sets, which is now gonna be up there, uh, it's across from Dollar General, flooding down to the drainage that you spoke of earlier, the new culvert you installed. But the problem is, you've got, you've got the parking lot, for those stores up there, with no culverts under them, and that water just runs all through those parking lots out into the road, and you'll end up with an inch and a half, two inches of water out there during a moderate to heavy rainstorm, which is a huge traffic nightmare. Where it flows across the road, hits the overflow grass on the other side, and it comes back out to the middle before it reaches the bottom of the hill.
They buy the covers, we'll put them in.
Well, and that's the problem, is they're gonna have to dig up their driveways and, and do all that, and you're gonna need some big storm drains in those areas to handle the amount of water coming off those parking lots. Additionally, from Cheer Zone, down towards the tracks, that problem exists from there. The water runs out into the road. It does not, and you have the side drainage there, but the sides are not kept clear enough, and the grass grows up and acts as a dam, and that water runs out into the road. It eventually clears by traffic, wicking it off and, and moving it around. On Old Highway forty-nine, from, um, Pecan Court, so if you make a right at the four-way stop sign, uh, go down, Pecan Court is the only road to your left and for West Wortham. From there, down past my property, there's a box culvert down there, uh, the water flows across the road because there's not adequate drainage put in. There's no, there's no, um, ditches or anything alongside of the road. One of my neighbors threw a lot of debris out there recently, and it caused a huge flood out in that road, um, because it was a lot of tree limbs, and they were stacked in such a way that it created a dam, and the water flowed out into the road. And of course, we've had a strange year for rain, you know? So, I just wanna bring up those issues with, with the existing drainage that's there. I mean, I live there. I see it every day. I'm not out there for two hours here, two hours there looking at it, you know? And I'm retired, and I have nothing but time. That's, that's the nice thing. The water coming down West Wortham Road to Old forty-nine in front of my property and my neighbors, on my side of the street, comes down a drainage ditch, it gets to the left side of, to the right side of my property as you're facing it, and I have a storm drain. And then when you come up my driveway, to the right and the left side of my driveway, I have a storm drain because there's a culvert under the front of my property. In the process of some of the developers putting in fiber or other things up there, my, uh, yard has sunk a little bit in those areas because the dirt wasn't compacted right, and so it retains water. But the bigger issue is the drainage ditch not being maintained, which is causing debris and everything else to flow down on top of those storm drains, and then I go out there in the middle of the rainstorm for a morning because my driveway acts as a dam, and the water flows out to West Wortham, and I measured four inches of water on West Wortham in front of my driveway. That's hard for people to drive through. That's not gonna be taken care of.
Is that this year?
Excuse me?
This year?
It's this year and past years, actually. Yeah, I keep an old fan rake out there.
Let me ask you, you did do, you said you, you had culvert, so you don't have open ditches in front of your house?
In front of my house, absent my neighbor nor I have open ditches.
And that's a big problem, and we've stopped that because when you have a home in a rural area that's designed for open ditch, it holds a lot more than a culvert that restricts it.
Right.
That, you might be part of the problem, but.
Well, the biggest problem is that the, uh, the debris flowing down from the ditches upstream from me, which are basically not being cleaned out, and the tree limbs and the branches and the leaves covering up those culverts. When I get out there and I straight that debris away, oh my goodness, that water flows through those things. It just goes right down, and it flows freely. And if you look down at the corner, West Wortham and Old forty-nine, you can see where the water flows down there, and I actually know that whole corner because I own the empty lot down there too. Another reason I'm not really happy about it.
Where's that in West Wortham?
Excuse me?
Where exactly is that? Give you, what's your address?
One eight five eight one West Wortham. If you were to turn off of Old forty-nine going towards the elementary school, I basically own the empty lot in the corner and the first house on that corner.
I don't think that's me. I don't know who it is.
That's.
That's me, yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's Ms. Power, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um.
We're just taking care of business.
Sure, sure.
To know which guy to call to come get it cleaned out.
Well, and again, it's up for me. It's where, it's where the issue is. It's where those, those ditches aren't cleaned out regularly and, you know, people put the debris out there, um, so. You know, I, I questioned wetlands. Um, I didn't get any notice of any wetlands mitigation, wetlands request changes or anything else, and maybe because of my house, where the wetlands are.
Patrick.
Pat.
I believe the ten minute timer went up, so.
He stopped it.
Oh, very good. I'm sorry.
No, he's got twenty minutes left at eleven twenty-five.
No one else can speak.
Or he can let somebody.
I have somebody else that may want to speak.
It's up to time then.
We understand that.
I just wanted to be clear.
Traffic problem.
He can't take their time unless they agree to that.
Okay, so, I, I got you. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, so this other gentleman wants to speak, so we're gonna give him ten minutes, and then that'll give you ten minutes left, so you can come back, or you can, or a third person can speak.
Do I speak?
Yeah. Come on. State your name and address, yeah, for the writer, please.
Some of the stuff. Hello.
Goodbye.
My name is Travis F. King, and I live at one eight six three two Old Highway forty-nine, Socia. It was supposed to be the section three of Robinwood, okay, that I live on. Old Highway forty-nine, those houses that are gonna be adjacent to the new sub subdivision, okay? What I'm gonna talk about mainly is just, uh, safety, uh, maybe a little bit of impact on the wildlife and trees, okay? I just don't want all the trees clear cut, you know? It's, it's like the name, Robinwood Forest Theory. Kind of nervous here, I don't know why.
We're really harmless.
Okay.
And you're our boss.
Okay. Um, let's see here. Uh, where I live at, I, there are a lot of wildlife that come through, the deer. A lot of times, I'll see bucks hanging out. One time, I looked out my window and there were like four of them, huge antlers, you know? And then another time, I came out in my front yard, there's a huge turtle, huge turtle, you know? I don't, you know, I like wildlife. Let's see here.
I'll be telling everybody where the deer are out there.
Yeah.
They won't know.
You're at your edge right now.
They'll be putting cameras up out there.
Oh, I'm putting a target on them. Okay, um, my problem, you know, I, I have a degree in business. Uh, I believe in free enterprise. However, the, the amount of homes that they plan to put in this one section, it kind of destroys the rest of the neighborhood, you know what I'm saying? And, uh, the, the, uh, the traffic situation, too much speeding. You know, it's called Old, Old Highway forty-nine, but then you run into, uh, a whole subdivision, and they, they see that, that curve up there, and they say, "Hey, I gotta speed around here and get some excitement out of speeding around this road." There are no sidewalks for people to walk on. It's dangerous. People can't ride a bicycle. It's dangerous. You get what I'm saying? Dangerous. That Wortham Road, it's a half-assed built road. It's sorry. It's a sorry road. It's curving and curving. There are blind spots around it. Once you get past that, the dollar store and that other little store, um, it's, it's just dangerous. You got a childcare center here, you got the Cheer Zone, and I've seen teenagers walking along that road, and I'm saying, "Why are you walking this road? It's too dangerous along the grassy area. It's water drain off there, snakes could be in there. It's dangerous." The road needs to be wider. You're talking about building additional homes into that area. You need, uh, additional fire protection. Where's that gonna come from? You have a, a small fire, uh, volunteer system up there next to the, the school, and I don't think they can handle all the homes you're talking about building into that neighborhood. A hundred and feet, a hundred and forty-three additional homes times two cars coming down that road, down Wortham Road. It's dangerous. It is, it's, it's dangerous, and to mitigate, they're saying, "Oh, it's not that much traffic." It's dangerous. From that railroad track up to Old Highway forty-nine, it's about a tenth of a mile, and where in there can you pull out cars into that area? Around nine, eight-thirty to nine-thirty, there's a train that's coming through, and people gotta get to work. That is the main drag for people to get to work. Um, let's see what else. Um, the, the homes that they're planning to build are sitting above the existing homes above Old Highway forty-nine. It's gonna be drain runoff there, and from people's oily garages or whatever. And what, I'm, I'm thinking about hazardous ways coming down onto our properties, what's gonna be done there, you know? The, it's just too much traffic. That road worth, West Wortham, Old Highway forty-nine, right here. I sit at that corner right there. It seems like every time I turn around, there's a drunk, drunker driving down West Wortham, bypassing that stop sign, running into the, the ditch area in front of my house, hitting a tree or something like that. Uh, it's, it's just plain dangerous. I think you need to put a, a stoplight up there or put some, something to slow those cars down. Something in the road is saying, boom, some, some bumping area to say, "Hey, slow down here." There are no sidewalks on West, on, uh, Old Highway forty-nine. Uh, it's, the road is just too narrow. Something's gotta be done. Okay, what else? I don't know why I'm just nervous like this.
Don't be nervous, but you should come to us and tell us all these things before we have a zoning issue, so that more, we're more, I mean, we, we ride the roads.
Well, you know, something I, I.
But we have to have communication to really.
I tried to communicate with several sheriffs there, uh, that came through my neighborhood. Uh, years ago, I'd, they say, "Hey, can you, can we park your car near your driveway?" And I said, "Okay, the kids are speeders." I said, "Come on, kid." Uh, but the thing is, they say, "Hey, we can't do anything about people speeding down the road." This is the sheriff, this is, this is, this is Old Highway forty-nine, and, and people will not slow down. My mailbox has been run over about three or four times, I forget how many times, uh, and, you know, I, you know.
Just so you know, that state law that the sheriff cannot run, uh, radar. I disagree with that highly.
Yeah, yeah.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah, but the thing is, uh, the fact that they speed up, uh, and think it's some kind of drag race area through that neighborhood. Something's wrong. Something is wrong, and on the weekends, I don't know my neighbors or whatever, whoever's got the Harleys.
Get your time limit, honey. I didn't say you're on point.
Is, is that it? How much time I got?
No, that's not it. Renee Williams is keeping her time.
Stay on point. I didn't want you to miss it.
Okay, uh, let's see here. Just one second, please. Yeah, okay. Uh, the, most of the homes are, are acre. I have about closer eight and a half of my property. Uh, and to, to, to reduce that neighborhood down to just less than half an acre for each lot, you know, that, that just diminishes the quality of our, our livelihood in that neighborhood. Okay, so, I would like you to think about that before you vote, please, and, um, I guess, I guess that's it for me. But the traffic is the main problem. Traffic and fire protection, okay? Need to improve that road, sidewalks. Thank you.
I took notes.
Okay, is there, um, anyone else that would like to speak?
I would like to say something.
Walk up here, sir, give your name.
I'm gonna talk about traffic, but go ahead.
We've talked about that. I would just want to say.
Now, that's it.
My name is Gene Gill. I live at one seven four five two.
I'm sorry, what's your name?
Huh?
What's your name?
Gene Gill, G.I. double L.A.M. Lives at seventeen four fifty-two Robinwood Drive, right at the entrance to the subdivision coming up. Lived there for thirty years. I retired from the Navy or got here and ended up retiring there. Uh, the main thing I wanna say is rebut something this lady said. She said that most of the houses in our neighborhood are two hundred thousand dollars or less, or around two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, no, they're mostly three hundred thousand, especially down the newer section of Robinwood East. Some of the older ones, like my house, I built for ninety thousand dollars. It's now worth two hundred and seventy something thousand dollars, so, I mean, put, no. And we've got bigger houses and bigger lots than what they're gonna have down there, and that's, I mean, it's a nice neighborhood. It's a great neighborhood. It's quiet for the most part. There's no, very little, uh, crime, thank you. Uh, but it's just scary thinking about something smaller and not really knowing what's gonna happen. I'm getting older, I just can't get up with it. Anyway, that's all I have, and I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're, uh, they had your, well, they've already had three speakers.
Oh, one other thing. I do know that you can talk to the police if you miss the bill, I think, comes out, patrols our neighborhood. I told it, I can't remember his name. There's a bunch of them. Well, anyway, it's one that patrols ours most time, and I stopped him one time and was saying, "Can you do anything about traffic down at the entrance? People run their stop signs and stuff like that." He sat down there and called about fifteen, twenty people in one day. Helped us a lot, so please do work out there.
Yes, thank you. Oh, oh, Mrs. Damae. One, one thing I wanna clear up is, when people move to the unincorporated area, they don't have to pay city taxes. City pays city and county taxes, but when they move out there, and you guys do, I do, I love it, I got annexed though, but, um, so you move out in the country, and you don't have streetlights most of the time, you don't have sidewalks. Then you move out into the country, and you want sidewalks and all those things, and you're not charged for them ta- with your taxes. So, that's just one thing to take into consideration. When more demands are made, taxes need to go up because the city charges taxes, the county charges taxes, and they have sidewalks and they have streetlights. We have Sheriff's Department, and we have ditches and roads and open ditches and no streetlights, because some people move out to the country. I had a situation where somebody wanted a streetlight and one, the next door neighbor didn't want one, so I had to paint one side of the street light black so it wouldn't bother him, and keep that, let the other part shine on the other house. So, we try, but we also have limited amounts of funds, and there are certain wrecked things that you move out to the country for, or you move into the city where you do have sidewalks, so that's another. So, that's another point, but I wanted, y'all brought it up.
And also, there's distances too, because our cities are concentrated. Rural areas are far apart.
Yeah, just like golf courts. You don't want golf carts on Highway forty-nine, but you do want them in Ocean Springs.
Renee, how much time do they have left?
Eight minutes.
You've got eight minutes.
Thank you. Want to get back to traffic. Coming off of Highway forty-nine onto Wortham Road.
One of the three speakers.
Coming off of Highway forty-nine onto Wortham Road. We've had people who've waited through that late through two, two changes of signals with the existing traffic. Let's have these other people onto there and think about what you're gonna be waiting, coming and going. The traffic back up in front of the daycare, I'm not gonna reiterate what he said. The intersection, as Gene had mentioned, at Wortham, Robinwood Drive and Old Forty-nine. There was a two-way stop sign, the county came up, y'all put a four-way stop sign. Might be to the point of putting a signal light up there. Northbound traffic coming off of Old Forty-nine into West Wortham Road. I see it every day. This gentleman saw it. I would suggest four out of every five cars that make that turn are in the wrong lane. They're basically in the exit lane of West Wortham Road onto forty-nine. Easily four out of five cars. Ironically, the people departing West Wortham Road onto forty-nine, going to the north, I'd suggest three out of five cars never stop. Go right on through. It's, it, it just amazes me and, you know, when I pull out there, um, I used to pull and turn to the left and people cut me off on the right. They'd go down to the right, so I couldn't see up, so I couldn't pull out as they're going on, on the Old Forty-nine. Well, over the years, with that rut started out, the county came in and they paved more and more and more of that turn and filled in that rut. And more and more and more, they filled in that rut. I went back and looked at Google Earth, because I thought I was going nuts. I said, dang gum, man, you can't see that stop sign. Well, sure enough, if you look at Google Earth and you look where the stop sign was a number of years back to now, it's probably moved three feet to the right. And you cannot see it when you come over that rise before you come to the end of the road. You can see it by my house, clearly, but that's one lot, lot and a half, if you will. I do agree with the comment about people running off the road three times this year. People have gone directly through that stop sign, right through it, taken out the big old arrow that points left and right, and just, they've had to be towed out of there. I used to pull people out. And the previous sheriff said, quit doing that. He said, because if they're drunk and something happens, you can be held liable. So I quit pulling people out, you know? These are major accidents, is what I'm talking about, running right through that thing. Right now, in front of my house, there's traffic. I have difficulty getting out with the existing traffic. On the last house, I have trouble getting out my driveway, sometimes somebody lets me out. At times, getting into my driveway, when I come off of Old Forty-nine, I've actually had cars behind me blocking that intersection because nobody will let me into my driveway. Now we're talking about another entrance to this development. I'm assuming it's going to be directly across from West Wortham, I don't know. But it's still gonna cause a lock, dam, or further. I heard somebody say something about there's not that much traffic. About two and a half weeks ago, I started counting cars. Yeah, I'm retired. I don't have a lot to do. You know, fifteen minutes.
I'm gonna put you to work if they can't roll down Harrison County.
I play golf. Fifteen minutes on July thirty-first, from eleven fifteen to eleven thirty, ninety-seven vehicles. Eight-four vehicles on July thirtieth, eighteen forty-five to nineteen hundred. Two-hundred and sixty-one vehicles on July ninth and a half hour period between five and five-thirty. There's a lot of traffic on that corner, you know? And I have, I only wrote down seven of them here, but I had two and a half weeks' worth of data, basically, of the vehicles going by there. Don't wanna talk about crime, anything else, but I do wanna talk about incremental development. For the last five or six years, I've heard dump trucks over there, I've seen dirt pulled out. I've called the fire marshal about tree burning. My grandson's got asthma, I've been raising him. After just openly burning trees, I realize we're in the country and everything, but there's better ways of doing it. And he actually went down and spoke to, to, I'm assuming it was TCB at the time, I don't know. But I'll tell you right now, as, as recent as three weeks ago, I heard dump trucks in there dumping dirt. Now, y'all saying, somebody made a comment about, you know, before dirt's moved, you know, we're gonna take care of this. Well, dirt's already been moved, a lot of dirt has been moved in there, believe me. If you go back there and look, from the West Wortham and Old Forty-nine and go to the north, you could see where they cleared all that quite a ways up, almost up to High Point and maybe past it in there. The other comment that was made was, who maintains a green space? And I, and I thank you for bringing that up. Who does maintain it? Who's gonna be liable when one of these children in development maybe falls in one of those retention pods? You know, I realize we have a certain amount of personal responsibility, but recently, I got notified that our protective covenances for Robinwood were allowed to expire. So we have no protective covenances in Robinwood. Ironically, I believe it's the same developer, not developer, the same owner of the property that's selling it to these people. Now, what's to say they're not gonna let them expire? You know, I've been in my house twenty-three years, when did they expire? I have no idea. We've got pavilions up there and other things. And some of that's been removed, some of the amenities have been removed.
Are you a member of the HOA?
There is.
There is, no way. I've never been in HOA and it was the developer who provided those amenities.
Y'all need to form an HOA.
So, you should have one so that you take responsibility for the amenities. Isn't that what your covenants say?
I, I have absolutely no problem with doing that, if we could get the neighbors to do it.
That's how-
The biggest, the biggest point that I'm making is we have a couple lakes, we have a couple pavilions. I don't think there'd be a problem with that. The biggest issue is the protective covenants being allowed to expire. And these people were directly asked about protective covenants and everything, and they responded.
Sir, I'm letting you know- The responsibility is not the developer on that covenants. That's the responsibility of the owners of the subdivision.
Who starts the HOA then?
You can extend them. Well, it's up to the citizens that buy a lot. When you buy a lot, get a copy of the restrict, you should've gotten a copy of the restrict covenants, which included the HOA.
There wasn't.
No, there wasn't. There's never been one.
Well, then you have to form one, but that ultimately is not the, you know, once the developer sells, when you buy, you get the covenants and you know what's in them.
Gotcha.
And then you can form your own if you get enough people to agree to do it. That's where the problem lies.
There you go.
Well, my biggest point is, again, drainage, there's that little box covert down the road. It's, it's right on Old Forty-nine before you get to West Wortham. If you look at the right side of it, there's been-
Stop the tracks, but go ahead.
It's, uh, no, 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 I'm talking on Old Forty-nine coming up to West Wortham, where you turn left onto West Wortham. There's a little box covert there. If you look at the right side of that box covert, the concrete barricade has been hit so many times, about half of it's missing. The left side of it, this is as you're going north on Old Forty-nine, the left side of it's pretty well intact. And I maintain and mow that whole corner down there, I go out and take care of that.
Thank you.
You know, I love, give me something good.
I was running a list for my guys to go check, but, um-
Take a stop at my house.
Okay.
Not a big problem. But, but the big thing I'm, I'm saying is drainage comes through there, I'm worried about their development backing up that water. That little branch never gets dry. And it's runoff from Robinwood that comes through there, it never gets dry. And if now we're gonna create a dam down there, and I'm not saying that's gonna happen, seven retention pods, I don't know. You know, it's, it's just, we have these big rainstorms, there's nothing to them.
But, but in all due respect, sir, our engineer would say that's a good thing, because that's where the rain, it actually could help with drainage, you see? So that's kind of, I'm worried about your argument in that sense, because retention, detention has a great purpose.
Sure. I wanna thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, we're gonna give the appellate five minutes for a rebuttal. And then we'll back.
There's a lot to go over. I'm gonna go over a couple of things again, just that were mentioned. First is, I guess, two-thirds of the property is already zoned R1. So, we're talking about one-third of the property being zoned. Two-thirds of it's already zoned R1. You had mentioned beforehand about the higher density stuff, which, so the comprehensive plan says that this is supposed to be medium to high-density residential or commercial. We're not planning any of those things, we're planning low-density. Even in an R1 district, as y'all are all aware, where, six thousand square foot is the actual lot size, is the absolute minimum that you can do. We're well over double that in the true lot size. So in the past, what's happened is people have included wetlands in the back of lots and included them in the lot space. So, my lot would be twenty thousand square feet if I did that. I had not done that, excluded the wetlands out of that. So, it'd be much closer to a half acre if we took the entire sixty-five acres and divided it by a hundred and forty-three houses, is nearly a half an acre per lot. So, I did include all those common areas and the wetlands in that. The main reason is because, so they wouldn't get impacted in the future. So we don't want them to be included in somebody's lot. They put a fence over there, over time, they fill it, drainage problems happen, things like that. So, as far as drainage is concerned, I, I think you have a blown-up version of that drainage plan. We've actually done a comprehensive drainage plan for this already. Is it complete a hundred percent? No, because we haven't done the final design of the subdivision layout. But we have really looked at that, the engineer's done a full drainage plan that the county engineer's already looked at and said that it was a good plan. Very happy that we brought her in on this level. And that there were minor adjustments, I don't wanna quote incorrectly, so I don't have her letter in front of me, minor adjustments that we may be able to make as the plan continues. So we've done well above and beyond what's required for a rezoning here. I mean, we have seven drainage plant, detention plans. So, who are detention pods? Who, uh, there were several conversations about HOAs and things like that. You have to form an HOA, which we will before any houses are built. It will be in perpetuity, but are they gonna last forever? I'm not sure, it depends on how involved. What I have found, as a general rule of thumb and development in the past, is people don't mind being a part of an HOA and paying dues if there's something that they get as a benefit. So, if they're paying dues and they're just having an entrance monumentation that's getting cut every once in a while, they're much more likely to resent that, not pay it, and let that association go. If there's parks, if there's walking trails, if there's playgrounds, things like that, that people get out of becoming a member of the HOA, they're much less likely to not only see those benefits, but want to become a member and understand the benefits. So, kind of a chicken and egg thing. Just, do you put them in and you make the place more beautiful and the place where residents wanna live? Or you leave them out and just have not, um, I'm not saying I know the answer to that question, but I, I would hope that we can figure out a way, and I'm happy to continue discussing that of how we can, if an HOA organization fails, how we can make the residents that are benefiting from those things become extra responsible. And I know there's some legal issues around that that I won't explore right now, but, um, so, I think I pointed out about the, the lot sizes and the density per acre. Traffic, I, I know has been a big thing. I, um, I think Ms. Rocker pointed this out, but there are no sidewalks in any of Robinwood. We will have sidewalks in our subdivision. They won't go anywhere. I cannot put sidewalks on public rightways and can't put them across other properties. So, I will have, we will have a buffer, an extra room, if they ever decide to put sidewalks out to loop in the rest of the neighborhood or to the commercial piece, but I can install them. And we have looked at that, and one main reason we are putting the extra entrance along West Wortham instead of two entrances along forty-nine or multiple properties going onto Highway forty-nine is to alleviate what traffic we can. On the drainage, I also will point out that, I mean, if you look at that drainage plan, most of the neighbors are actually draining onto our property. I mean, I, I think all of them are actually draining onto our property. So, I know my time's up, but they, we, we've actually maintained the wetlands and the current drainways to ensure that even their drainage is taken and funneled the way it already is, to make sure there's no drainage.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I wanna clarify something I said, and that I was literally inarticulate. I think I explained to you why the availability of public and water sewer, the availability of water, public water and sewer does not justify a zoning change. It simply makes it allowable. So, there are other conditions in the zoning ordinance that we need to consider. Just because you have public water and sewer doesn't mean that it's all, that's one of the conditions that you use. It simply means it's allowable. So, there, the issues of whether we change the zoning or not is not necessarily the availability of, of water and sewer. It does allow, and without it, we couldn't do it. But just, it just allows, it does not justify. That's what I was saying.
Thank you. And if I, if I may, excuse me, if I may, Renee Wiggins, who's been a great timekeeper, is also on the school board for Harrison County. Could you address what he said earlier about, are any of those kids going, currently going to West Wortham now gonna be shifted to the new school when it gets opened? Or maybe just fill him in real quick while you're here, since you're here.
It will affect the number of some from West Wortham. Will be moving over to the new West Harrison School, some of them. Not a large amount, but it will affect.
Tell her to help that, it sounds like it. Okay, what's the board's pleasure?
Um, I've listened to both sides. I've reviewed many of the different plans that this developer has done in the past. I've looked at what he's been involved with. I've also spoken with him about different issues that I had. And it seems to me that this is one developer that is trying to bend over backward to try and make a beautiful, nice neighborhood. And the land is already, it's already zoned. I mean, more than half of it's already zoned for a half-acre lot. So, that being said, if I, you could get another developer in there and put tract housing in there. I mean, you, you could get someone who wouldn't care about your drainage or care about your traffic or care about anything that you talked about here. But this developer does, in my opinion. And I think that if, if, if you have, if you wanna continue a, a conversation with this gentleman and with our engineering department, nothing can happen until our engineer signs off on it. But I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we grant this appeal, both, uh, both part one and two.
Okay, have a second.
Because I feel like it would be best for the community. People are gonna develop, y'all, growth is coming. And I'm sorry that everybody's life is disrupted a little bit, but that's just the way, I mean, the more people you get, if you want growth in your community, that's, that's just what's gonna happen. So you want a good developer or you don't?
Are you gonna-
So we have a motion- I'm sorry, sir.
Second.
We have a motion to grant the appeal, and we have a second. Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I've got abstain.
We've got one abstain and four ayes, so the appeal's granted. Okay, any other business from the board? With that, I need to entertain a motion to recess till two o'clock today for a text.
Before we do that, I want to answer your question about the bid.
I was sorry.
Um, my young associate who was apparently listening, something about the case, I think directly. This is ridiculous. Uh, this is a case that he, the irregularity did not alter the bidding process, did not provide any bidder the advantage or benefit over the other bidder, did not prejudice the rights of any other bidder or public, did not alter the price, quantity, quality or quantity of his bid, and the waiver of the irregularity did not allow an opportunity for fraud or favoritism or affect the integrity of the competitive bidding process. In that case, they upheld the entity's determination that, that would waive the irregularity's bid. During leave? As I understand it, the defect here was if the bidder submitted his bid through electronic means early, it wasn't late.
So he didn't have a chance to alter that bid?
Yeah, no, no advantage was gained, only the county employees saw the bid. Um, so, he had to get some favoritism in the bid, he was the low bid anyway. Twenty-one cents per pound, I don't know who you want his bids or another bids, twenty-three cents a pound. Twenty-one cents per pound, I don't know who you want his bids are, but another bid's twenty-three cents a pound. Plus seventeen fifty minimum bid, which apparently is not really an issue in court for Jody. But if this board wants to consider the lowest and best bid, I think the board's within its power to say that the bid is invalid for not having been submitted correctly, but I think the board also has the option to say to waive that irregularity and consider that bid and then determine which is the lowest and best bid. It may still be the twenty-three cents a pound, that's what the board.
As long as it.
Maybe Jody could make a recommendation as to which one's the lowest and best bid. Because if you exclude that lower bid.
So we can keep this table until tomorrow?
Or until Jody.
Or whenever Jody's ready, or he comes back.
I'm just saying, the board has an option, you had one bidder, otherwise, if you had a single bidder and the board made it, I mean, he may recommend that that's still the lowest and best bid, but to exclude it because they were fifteen minutes early and they, and they just filed it under the wrong category.
Can we, Pam, could you maybe get in touch with Jody and we'll bring this off the table at two o'clock when we come back? Okay, so he'll be back at two, so before we.
I'm concerned, Tim, that that first bid was exposed, the other one electronic, we had a chance to change.
He said, I asked him that.
Yeah, good.
It's only national, he said, only county employees were able to see it.
Yeah.
Because it was a paper, it was a paper bid, not electronic it was of, but it was submitted like electronic.
Okay, so he'll be back at two o'clock. So we need a motion to recess until two.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, do I need a motion to come out of recess?
Yeah, you have a motion to recess until two.
Hello? Hi, this is Chad from Pinal Tax Solutions.
Yes, sir, you've got the Harrison County Board of Supervisors here?
Okay.
Hear us okay?
Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, I can hear you fine.
Okay, so I need a motion to come out of recess.
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favors, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Okay, Mr., what's his name? Kendall? Tell us why you're appealing your tax assessment.
Okay, do you want me just to run through our, our, our analysis of the property?
Yes. Yes, please.
Okay. All right, so this is the Pat Beck Honda Dealership. Goldport, we, the property is on at two million ninety-one thousand thirty-five dollars. Based on our cost approach, using Marshall and Swift numbers, our cost value is coming to eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred and nine dollars. And this dealership was built in nineteen ninety-two, so it is on the older side for a dealership. It's ten thousand nine hundred and ninety-two square feet, it's on three, or nine acres. This is three parcels.
Right.
One of the parcels is just purely land, just like brush and trees. One of them is primarily a parking lot with a little service center on it. And then the other one's the main dealership with parking surrounding it. I don't know, do you have our, our, that, our evidence? Analysis packet would be sent to the board? Or do you want me just to, to run through it, or do you want a reference as I talk about it?
Yeah, our, this is Tim Holman, our board attorney wants to talk to you.
Yes, sir. You were sent a notice by the county asking for certain things. I want to ask you if y'all covered the letter and a notice sent. Have y'all produced any, do you have any books or records of your gross income and expenses for the past three years?
This, we didn't, we didn't do an income and out primarily of the dealership. We value those on cost.
I understand, sir, so, so the answer to the question is you did not, you're not producing today any gross income and expenses for the past three years, you don't have those records?
No, I, I don't have those.
Did you ask the, the dealership to, or the owner to produce those records to the board?
I can contact them and see if they're, if they have that information, but it is a, an owner occupied property.
I understand.
You know, I, I can ask for that. I know their sales staff were down for the year, this past year, you know, based primarily because COVID. But I know their sales dropped significantly since last year.
Well, the problem is, have you brought today, you filed this appeal, you have not brought any gross income or expenses for the past three years, so the board could look at the income approach a bit chooses to. Right?
Yeah, no, I, I don't, I don't have those.
Do you have any? Do you have any recent appraisals on the property?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, so did you ask the owner, your, the owner's representative, if they had any recent appraisals on the property?
I know they didn't, but I can ask them when the last time they did have an appraisal on the property.
Okay, do they have any loan or mortgages on the property?
Again, I, I can't, I don't know, I, you know, these are more interrogatories, I'd have to ask the property owner.
All right.
I didn't.
Do you have, do you know what the current insurance policies are insuring the property and the value that they have the property insured for as of today?
No, no, I, I don't. I just, I'm just, I, all I have here today is just our cost analysis, Marshall and Swift, based on Marshall and Swift. That's all I have, so I can give it to property owner for anything else.
Today is the day for the appeal and the notice asked you to provide these documents today, and that's what I'm just trying to make clear, do we have them or not? Apparently not.
No, we don't have them.
Okay.
I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I didn't know that Phil actually said that, so I, I was unaware that those were required.
Well, there's a, the notice is signed. Notice, I'm sorry, who's on the phone?
What was that?
Who's on the phone, I'm sorry?
This is Chad Standage from Pinal Tax, representing the property owner.
Who's Austin Gladwell?
He works in our office too, I'm just doing the hearing for him today.
Okay, well. He signed, he signed the notice that has those requirements in it, that's why I'm asking that. Okay, so the, what you've presented today is based on the cost approach? I mean.
Yeah, the cost, yeah, we're presenting the cost approach.
Okay, well, then you may proceed for the board to establish the cost approach, but what I'm looking at, y'all have comparable sales in there, so it's not just the cost approach, but go ahead. You can now present your position.
I didn't know, all I have is the cost in our packet, so I don't know, because they, I didn't know they supplied sales. Maybe when they initially sent evidence over with this filing, maybe they sent some sales, but all I have for our evidence is just the cost.
Okay, well, it's.
You think you have sales?
Yeah, they, they produced a report with the sales in it, I would not call them comparable sales. But there are sales.
Yeah, I, I don't, I, I'm not positive on that. Normally, the dealers, just like I would say, we value these on cost.
Okay, well, go ahead, you have, this is your opportunity to present to the board the evidence on the, of the value of the property based on the cost approach.
Okay, thank you. So our cost analysis, if you have our packet in front of you, it's on page thirteen. You can see the breakout, we did a breakout for service center, showroom and service garage. We used the average for each of those sections of the dealership. The service center, the base cost for Marshall and Swift is seventy-nine dollars fifty cents square foot. For the showroom, it's a hundred and six dollars square foot, and for the repair garage, it's sixty dollars square foot. We did a, and basically, based on the Marshall Swift depreciation table for the service center, we used seven percent depreciation. For the showroom, twenty percent depreciation for the, another service center on the, of the other parcel, we used thirty-two percent depreciation. And the service garage was forty-two percent depreciation, which is reasonable, given the dealership was built in nineteen ninety-two. We use a reasonable multiplier of point nine zero. And we added in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for paving and, and extra features. So our RCLD that we're talking to, based on our cost, Marshall and Swift data, is six hundred and thirty-one thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. And with our lands, based on our land sale, and I'll get to those in a second, but our land sale value is coming to two hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars. So that's where we got our total cost, which is the RCLD plus the land, which is eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars, or seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents a square foot. And we did provide a tax in Marshall and Swift documents, how we came to all those numbers, depreciation and multiplier. Those are all the tests on page. Page nineteen is the land sale that we provided. There's five land sales. The subject property is on at two dollars and sixty-four cents a square foot. Our five land sales are ranging from thirty-two cents a square foot to a dollar and three cents a square foot. And again, that brings our total land that we came to, it's two hundred and thirty-three thousand, thirty-four dollars. And on the next page, page twenty, you can see the land sales that they relate to the subject property. They're all in, in Goldport. And we did attach the CoStar reports for each of those sales, if you'd like to look at those as well. So that's, that's the presentation that I have, that's all I have. Just our cost analysis and our total value is eight hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and nine dollars that we're talking to. That's all I have.
Can I ask you some questions, sir? The, the five land sales you've got on here, one is on Three Rivers Road. Are you, do you believe that land sale on Three Rivers Road is comparable to a piece of property located on Highway forty-nine?
Well, we did, we tried to find the best land sale, there wasn't many land sales in Goldport, so we provided the, the five land sales that we thought were the best, that sold in the last couple of years. We did make adjustments on the land sales, but, you know, I, I wouldn't say it's a hundred percent, you know, the same, you know, comparable to the subject property, I don't think any land sale is, but we provided the best, the best that we were able to find.
Okay, well.
So that's, that's all I got.
So East Railroad Street, you think is a comparable land sale? Do you know where that is in relation to this property? Land sale number five. Land sale number five is on East Railroad Street.
Yeah, I know five, you can see the map on page twenty, it's down south, you know, it's more towards the ninety. So, yeah, it is, it's a distance away, but it's still in Goldport.
Cow, yeah, Cow and Lorraine Road is also a very irregular piece of property, very small. You know, you familiar with the other land sales that are along Cow and Lorraine Road?
I provided all the land sales as comparable that we were able to find. So, you know, we can run through them all if you wanted to, you know, there, none of them are going to be pertinent to this.
That's what I'm doing, the board, the board needs to know how these were comparable. The East Railroad Street is a, runs along a railroad track. There's certainly not going to be a car dealership anywhere over there, I can promise you that. Cow and Lorraine Road is a very small piece of property, irregular, there, there are at least probably six or seven other recent land sales on Cow and Lorraine Road that were certainly a lot more expensive than the piece that you picked out here. I don't know why you couldn't find them, but that's a very irregular, small, kind of caught between two of the businesses piece of property. What about Tanner Road? Is that a residential piece of property?
You can see it in our packet, you know, I, like I said, you know, we can go through each one of these if you want. We can provide the CoStar report, that can answer any question you have.
It looks like it's a.
It's a valued land, it's hard to find land sales, especially in, in Goldport, you know, we found the best that we were able to provide.
You agree with me, there's supposed to be comparable land sales, don't you? It's supposed to be comparable to the piece of property that you're looking at, do you agree with that?
Yes. Why, why, that's why we included them, we included the best five we were able to find.
Okay. Did you look at the market data?
Did you, I, I don't, we, I don't know, we were, we never received the county's evidence on this. You know, I would have liked to receive that and see what land sales you were able to, you know, I know you mentioned some, to see what you have, so I can kind of repeat those, but we were never provided the evidence that we, from the county.
And your client is welcome to come meet with the tax assessor or was, but at this point in time, you filed an appeal to the board supervisors on that assessment, and so it's your appeal that you have to pursue and, and show evidence as to why you believe it's not the correct value, but.
But if you're mentioning there's less, if you're mentioning there's different land sales that are higher value, you know, I'd like to actually do those, you know, it's hard to take a word for it, you know, if you provide the CoStar report of land sales.
I understand. I do know that there's lots of land sales along Cow and Lorraine Road, I wouldn't necessarily call them comparable, but there's certainly been many recent land sales along Cow and Lorraine Road that are higher than this small piece, but I, I can't help you there, you'd have to find them yourself. The, the question I got is, did y'all look at the market data approach? Or did you just look at the cost approach?
I just looked at the cost approach, that's typically how dealerships are valued.
I understand, did you, and you, you didn't, he already said you did not look at the income approach?
Nope, I did not, I just looked at the cost.
May I ask, what, what is your insurance value, your property at? Do you know?
I don't know. So I'd have to ask the client on that one, I don't, I don't know that offhand.
Sir, the problem is, the board asked for that information and you're required to produce it at this hearing.
I was unaware of that, I, I would have provided, I was unaware.
Well, it's in the notice, it's, it's in the notice that your partner signed, and it also was requested of Pat Pack last year. And they didn't provide it then either. And the year before, more than every year we ask for that.
I was unaware.
You would agree.
Any of the cost approach?
Would, would you agree with me, sir, that?
All I, all I know is the property owner didn't agree with the value, so we provided the cost approach.
All right, would you agree with me that, would you agree with me that an owner of a property will generally insure their property for what they believe it's worth?
I, I can't answer that. Well, I mean, is there a, is there a year this year? I, I can't answer questions.
Yeah, we're here, we're here to gather evidence, that's what this hearing's about.
I can't answer something I don't know, I told you I presented the cost approach, that's our, that's my evidence that I have.
And that's all. Okay.
I think we've heard enough.
Anything else you want to add, sir, before we leave?
Nope, that's all, that's all I have.
I could entertain a motion to take it under advisement?
Second.
Or I need?
I mean, motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
The board will take it under advisement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
Okay, sitting here, what, what are your recommendations?
Yeah.
No change?
No change?
So I'll do a motion for no change, eh?
Second, a motion for no change.
Second.
A motion to deny the appeal.
Oh, I'm sorry.
A motion to deny the appeal.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, all those in favor signify by aye. All those opposed, motion carries. Yeah, see, I got no problem with doing it without.
Didn't know I had other issues to want.
Who has the authority to determine which approach is taken? The county or them, or is it negotiable?
How do you determine which approach is?
General call, generally it's, you, you, you use all three approaches. You pick which one is the best.
Consider all three.
The best for whom? The county or for the?
Best is, first, if you don't have the income, then you can't, that's why we asked them for the income, they didn't give it. First off, I'll tell you note, what's important about that notice, the law says if we ask them for the information and they felt provided, they lose automatically, that's why I was asking to be provided. So they're prohibited from appealing if they appeal it to the circuit court, and they have not produced the evidence.
So they don't produce the material needed to do that particular approach, it's their problem.
That's right, they can't appeal. So then the, the second issue is if, if, you know, it's a business. So then the, the second issue is if, if you, you know, it's a business, so you look at the income approach is one way to do it. Another way is the cost approach, the other is the market data approach. He kind of went between, but it's comparable or ridiculous.
Yeah, I thought it was that.
The Marshall and Swift publication, as he prefers to, is a cost manual. It's a worldwide cost manual. The state gives us an appraisal manual, so we don't use Marshall and Swift. It's not uncommon to get a Marshall and Swift workup that's incomplete. I've had somebody who would represent a hospital, they'd say, look at the Marshall and Swift on it, and it wouldn't have the elevators in it, it wouldn't have the floors in it. It's just an incomplete for a shell.